Thirteenth at seven oh one P M. Today, we want to begin our meeting in our school year by acknowledging that we gather as David Douglas School District on the traditional land of Multnomah, Wasco, Cowlets, Cathlament, Clackamas, Bands of Chinook, Twalton, Calypsoya, Molalla, and many other tribes, past and present, who made their homes along the Columbia and Willamette Rivers in honoring with gratitude the land itself and the people who have steward it throughout the generations. We want to again acknowledge the impact of the forced removal, violence, and attempted erasure of the lives and legacies of Indigenous people, past and present, and to commit to creating an educational environment that honors Indigenous history and contributions and encourages the continual pursuit of better stewardship of the land we inhabit as well. And okay, we do not have A S B president tonight?
We didn't get any notification, but I think we can go on and show them.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Okay, good. Can we welcome Kyla Starr? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Kyla Starr. I transferred back here from Lala High School, but I went here like my freshman and sophomore year. And I just wanted to note a few things. So at Molalla, they did have a Native American class that if you took it, it would be counted towards a social studies credit. And at David Douglas, I realized you guys have a Latinx Studies, Latinx Studies class and a Black Studies class, in which they count towards an English credit. And so I wanted to offer the idea of possibly having a Native Studies course at David Douglas High School. And I was wondering if you guys had any plans in place for implementing that or if we needed to consider that?
So it's just public comments, then you can say that. If you want to say anything else about why it's important to you personally?
Well, I don't know. I did take, I'm Native American, I did take that class at Molalla High School, though, because I feel like you never know too much about your culture. But I don't know, I feel like it would just be fair and equal to like have that class and for others to also learn about like our culture as well. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. We, yeah, just, just to know, we can't respond during public testimony, but at the end, we do have some time for reflection, but thank you very much. Can we welcome Eli Cox? Welcome.
Yeah. Hi, so I'm Eli Cox. I'm a volunteer coach here at Street Soccer USA, P D X Chapter. And so part of, I know what we'll discuss today is addressing the potential field on a hundred and second by the old Fred Meyer. And so I'm here to just, you know, be a proponent for that and just speak to my experience as a coach and volunteer for Street Soccer P D X over the past three years and seeing what it's done to community and build confidence, diversity throughout the community and seeing kids who, you know, maybe don't have a place to go, want to play, but maybe don't have a club team to support them, maybe they can't afford it. We provide things like bus passes and opportunity to build children's confidence. And so I hope that the board will consider this greatly because through my experience, it's been an amazing community builder and I think the opportunity is amazing. And so with that land, I know it's here in Portland. It's, you know, it comes at a premium and it's what the, the community tends to prioritize. And this is something that I think would be the most beneficial thing to the David Douglas School District and the children that are here. And so, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We welcome Kate Sherman?
Good evening, everybody. So I was just realizing I have now been a David Douglas parent for ten years. And if we stick around and she goes all the way through, it will be twenty-seven in total. So I, I have had a great experience as a parent in David Douglas. I sing the praises of the district in the rooms I have been in. And that was part of why it was really hard for me to have that long of built up confidence in the district kind of go up in smoke in a day. And I witnessed what, just from where my vantage, were multiple serious fumbles by district leadership on October fifteenth. That is the day my confidence kind of went up in smoke. And I was thinking in my head, if this was the opportunity for a dry run for federal agents, wow, we just scored ourselves a B and F. Lucia, you're too young to work here. When you're older. And I think that the reason everything had such a great outcome was that the kids outshone the adults by leaps and bounds. They were incredibly mature and appropriate and restrained and enthusiastic. And so I think in many ways, we got lucky. Because if federal agents breach one of our campus buildings and touch a hair on the head of a student or staff member, and there is any question of whether someone related to the district was complicit, seventy-five percent of your seats will be empty the next day and maybe forever. I know that if that is allowed to happen, I will never in my natural life trust the school district with my children again. And I'm happy to say that, good job, David Douglas, because Menlo Park yesterday and Ron Russell and Wes Powellhurst today, when the time actually came for preparedness to be tested, even with the infancy of infrastructure that we have relative, it was incredible. I don't know if it could have gone better. I mean, I think what they say now is they understood the assignment. Like, it was, it was really uplifting, really restored as some amount of, it restored my confidence at the elementary and middle school level between yesterday and today, how things were handled. And some of it was the right people being in the right place. But that's because the right people will get themselves in the right place and then will build. And so what, what has been able to happen, given where we're at in terms of organizing the infrastructure, was miraculous. I mean, it was beautiful, it was wonderful. If you're out there somewhere, truck mounted P A guy at Menlo Park, like shout outs, because he brought the community out and he lifted everyone's spirits. And the people, those of us standing on Gleason, we didn't see or hear a school bus, we didn't see a line of cars, we had no idea the kids were leaving until someone came out and said, they're all gone, you can go. So props to the staff at Menlo Park. And, and to Ron Russell and Wes Powellhurst, people got home safely. And, you know, the high school with its seven buildings has yet to have its experience. But there's a lot of good that I didn't know that I was going to get to say, and I'm really glad that I get to say it. Because people are really, really care and are really showing up and doing so in the right ways. And I also really urge you to check for blind spots because I think you might have some that might be liabilities. So thank you for this time, and I'm still glad to be a David Douglas parent.
Thank you. Frida Christopher? Welcome.
Kind of funny sitting on this side. I haven't sat on this side since my son was at Floyd Light. So anyway, I'm here today. Frida Christopher, you don't need addresses anymore? Okay. I want to explain to some of the newer board members my involvement in the Elks property. I was there when we originally purchased it. I was part of the planning on doing an urban school there. I've negotiated with Prosper Portland on street improvements and activation. I've co-chaired the Gateway Stakeholder Group on the five-year plan for Gateway U R A, which included funding for activating the Elks site. And I've also had a lot of early discussion with the project manager there on ways we could activate it. I know Prosper and the district will do all the due diligence they need on it. But of the proposals we threw around, this one seems to align with the school district most. It is providing organized activity for youth, especially our underserved youth that can't afford to pay the high cost of a lot of the fees that clubs have. It's going to activate the site, put eyes on that area, which will improve the safety of the area. That's one of the things they say most about any development or any area that has safety problems, more eyes on the streets, the better. It will benefit the area and show the city, our, our district's effort to improve the area, encourage, encourage their support to help do something with the Fred Meyer site. Since this is a nonprofit, Pat doesn't have to worry about property taxes, which is a bane of her existence. And, and when the red school, when the district is ready to build a school on the site, it'll have minimal impact on the construction. Having sat on that site, I know you'll, you'll think hard and see if it does align with our district. And I am supportive of the project. And thank you for today.
Thank you. Rob Gray? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Rob Gray. I'm a soccer coach with Street Soccer P D X. And today, I'm here to advocate on behalf of the Prosper Portland soccer field that's being proposed. Specifically, I would love to talk about a team that I get personally to coach through Street Soccer, the Portland Supercats. I'm rocking our jersey right now. This is a team of adults with developmental disabilities, to my knowledge, with the exception of Special Olympics. It's the only organized soccer team for people with disabilities around. We are specifically a very creative and non-competitive team. I have a few players who are pushing seventy and they never kicked a football before two years ago. We are there to have fun, we're there to build community. And we are at the very, very bottom of a hierarchy of fields, field privileges. It is quite difficult to find field space in and around Portland. There's a lot of money around and a lot of rich people get those fields, those kids get those fields. There are a lot of people out east here who, who don't fall into that category and have trouble joining teams. And there's the folks with disabilities who just want a space to, to practice and to hang out. This would give us access to be able to have practice more regularly, to kind of take it to a next level. Right now, we meet twice a month in the auditorium in the Matt Dishman Community Center, which we love very much. But we've been there for two years and we're ready to kick the ball a bit further. So please take, please give us that field. Thank you.
Thank you. And Carlos Ku? Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here with Street Soccer and the proposal of the field. I've been in the Douglas, David Douglas school system for about seven years. I've also been a part of Street Soccer for seven years as well, not only as a coach, but as a participant as well. They have helped me to get out of the streets and, because I, my family of financial situations wasn't able to find like a proper soccer, soccer team for me. And so it was a perfect way to come here and play, be able to play soccer, have coaches to train us all the time. We want this field, so not just the soccer community will benefit from it, but an example of this would be like Grant, Buckman, Buckman Middle School, no, Buckman High School and the other, what do you, Matterline. All those schools have open fields and I know that soccer is being played, a lot of pickup is being played in all those fields, not just soccer, but football, ultimate frisbee, lacrosse is being played there as well. I know that growing up, a lot of the fields were fenced in, so they weren't really accessible for us to play or they would have the goalies locked up and chained up as well. And so this is a way to bring the community in and have a bunch of kids come and play pickup because for me, in my own experience, soccer has really kept me out of the streets and kept me, all these coaches in my life have really helped me to be who I am today. They have inspired me and now I want to be the same coach that I had when I was a kid to all these other kids growing up. Thank you, good afternoon.
Thank you. All right, so now we'll move on to, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Yeah. Sure, of course. Jamal Yasen? Okay, can we welcome Jamal Yasen? Welcome.
Good afternoon. I came here to give a speech about Unity Football and how it helped me become not just a better soccer player, but a better human being. And it didn't really just help me with soccer. It had a program where there was some, if you were injured, there was places that would help you do your homework, there was a place where, not, there was a place where it was just a better environment for me. And I don't think it would just help me, but better, more kids in the community and help kids get off the street, help kids learn, help kids just really have somewhere to, have somewhere, have a safe spot to be at. And there's a bunch of kids who are really struggling with school and they really like soccer, but they don't have a safe spot to be at. And I think Unity Football would be the right place for it. And we've been really needing a field lately, but we barely have any field space for little kids, older kids, and we've been needing a field for a safe environment. That's it.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome, Elizabeth?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Elizabeth. I'm here regardless also with Unity. I'm a parent. My son is shy, but he's over there on the back. We participated, so this is going to be our third year. We have experienced a love and welcome community in a respectful, helpful way. Talking about being able to afford soccer. We need a field because I just feel like we've been bouncing everywhere. I feel like they always kick us out. And our kids are suffering from that. Because there are times where they are not able to practice because we don't have fields or we had to play less because the other team already reserved the park. So it's been a struggle as a parent and frustrating in our kids to not be able to have a field for them to practice when it's raining, sunny, under a light, because there's a lot of parks where there's a lot of, they don't have lights. Like right now, the, the lights over started sooner, so it started to be dark. So it's less practice for our kiddos. And it's a place where they feel happy they stayed out of trouble. I have my oldest son here, he would like to share his experience.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex. I was, I was gonna say about Unity that, that experience I had was really fun, that I connected a lot with other people as well, other people with different ethnicities and having just fun about it. And then, like, yeah, sometimes you don't have enough, like fields to play, have light to play more, or like opportunities to have like a free space to have fun and play around with the ball. And so like, I feel like we should have an opportunity to have these fields so we can have more fun and be creative about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we now welcome Alice Eberharder? Welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name's Alice Eberharder. I am the president of David Douglas Education Association, our licensed union. Normally, I am inviting members of D D E A to testify on a specific subject at these meetings. This month is a little bit different. And a big part of that is just what's going on in our community right now in terms of ICE, in terms of protests at the high school last month. There's so much going on that I really wanted to prioritize listening and hearing from our community and hearing what are the needs around us. So our members definitely still have needs, there's definitely still things going on there. But I wanted to just make space for us as a union to be listening to folks around us, too. In, in this space that we're in right now, I've been reflecting a lot on the different roles that we all can play. Because the district is going to have a really different role than a union or a community group or a student group. And all of those roles have different limitations, right? But they also have different strengths. So I'm trying to think about sort of like a quilt. How can we patch them together to use all of our strengths and support each other's limitations to, to kind of help that community effort come together when things are really stressful? So like I said, right now, just trying to support my members and listening to each other, listening to their students and their students' parents and the families around us of what are the needs? There's so much good work going on and I want to make sure that the work we're doing is responding to the real needs around us and not, not making assumptions about those needs. So my ask for you all, and all of you honestly, is to keep connecting, talk to your neighbors, make those relationships if you don't have them already. At the, I was lucky to be at the administrator training this morning around district response to ICE. And I really love to see that the approach was, this is what we're trying, we're getting feedback at every step, we're refining it, we're going to keep refining it, we're going to keep getting feedback because it's a great first step, not a first step, it's a great couple steps in and we can keep going. And I would love to see that attitude in a lot of different spaces. So for us as a union, for our community, keep that curiosity and care for each other as we're continuing in this work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now O S C A Darla Black? Welcome.
Hello, I'm Darla Black and I'm president of O S C A Chapter Forty. I represent the classified employees in our district. I want to start out by recognizing our Classified Employees of the Month, and we're a little behind on this. So we kind of revamped our program and so we're recognizing a different employee group each month. And with that, we're sending out a notification for nominations to their admin supervisors and managers and asking them to nominate employees. So we started out with September and we recognized our custodians with the hard work that they do over the summer to get our buildings open, especially with the bond work. And so then with that, Dawn Sick from Ron Russell was chosen as our Employee of the Month. And some of the things that were said was that he went above and beyond to ensure the cleanliness and welcoming environment at Ron Russell. And then in October, we chose, we focused on school secretaries. And Meredith Adams was chosen from Menlo Park. And she has a calm manner and ensures that everyone visiting the office feels valued, seen and heard. So I just want to recognize those two folks and thank them for the work that they do for David Douglas. Last month, I wasn't present because I was out on leave and so I submitted a letter and I hope that you all have the opportunity to read that. I just want to emphasize the need is still present in our buildings and classified are still continuing to support our students with trauma and high needs and often hurt and injured during, with that, doing their job. I had the opportunity to sit down with Ken Patton, Ken and Andy Patton-Darcy this afternoon and I wanted to thank them. We had a collaborative and constructive conversation and I really look forward to continuing that. So just thank you all and that's it.
Thank you. Now we will take invited public input from David Douglas High School Native American Heritage Month presentation? Welcome. You're welcome to bring chairs up and all that, too. Make yourself comfortable.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Manuel. I am a English teacher at the high school and I co-chair the Equity Team with Lawrence Drusick Land Fair. And then tonight, I have some of our I S U students and Laura Alexander is here as well with us. She and I co-advised the I S U. So I was going to start us off with a land acknowledgement, but you guys already covered that, so thank you so much. We can skip to the next one because the rest is all other things. So November is Native American Heritage Month. Interestingly, American Indian Day was initially celebrated during May. And it wasn't until nineteen ninety when President George H W Bush signed a resolution designating the month of November towards recognizing the contributions of the first Americans in the United States. Here we have a quote from Chief White Eagle. It says, "When you are in doubt, be still and wait. When doubt no longer exists for you, then go forward with courage. So long as mists envelop you, be still. Be still until the sunlight pours through and dispels the mists, as it surely will, then act with courage." And then I just have a couple of pictures from the spring powwow to show you before I turn it over to our student who is going to be speaking. So if you could just flip through these to share, that would be awesome. This was held at Ron Russell in the spring of twenty twenty-five and our I S U students got to help be a part of it and they really enjoyed this opportunity and really enjoyed bringing the community together in this way. Mostly organized by N A P A C. Mostly organized by NAPAC. Awesome, so we are going to hear from Travis Miller.
Good evening, board members, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. Some of you might remember me from years past here to speak about the same thing. But those who have not heard my name before, my name is Travis Miller. I am a sophomore here at the high school. Um, I'm a representative from ISU. I'm a three-sport athlete. I'm a proud member of the three affiliated tribes of North Dakota and I'm also part of the Portland All-Nation Canoe Family. And that is just a few of the things that make me who I am. I'm here to bring up the disservice to the native youth in the David Douglas District. Let me share that I have been in this district for ten years-ish, from elementary to high school. And all throughout this, I've learned from different teachers about the history of our country and all throughout that. And started learning this year some meaningful Native American lessons in my English class. Previously has been about Turkey's thankfulness and other non-native education. And November is Native American Heritage Month. And previously, oops, my bad. And although I'm thankful for things like my family and friends, it would be nice to learn more about the first people of this country, my ancestors. I would like to see myself in our lessons. I would like to learn about my ancestors. I would like the people around me to learn more about these things and help bring understanding to the native students, but those around them and the land they teach on. This land, the whole district, that the land, the district is on, is native land. It is important to honor the land you are on, to take care of it and to leave it better than how you came to it. One lesson I did get in middle school was about boarding schools. My ancestors were forced to go to at a young age, pulled from their families, tribes and lands. These schools were put together to force kids like me to be less native. Brainwashed, beaten, starved, some killed, some made it out of these schools to share these stories, which are still coming out today. Is this a lesson you would like your student to learn? What was thought of when this lesson was picked? Was I thought of? The trauma, anger and hurt this brings up in a world still finding my ancestors' remains at sites all over, not just the United States, but also Canada. This trauma is still affecting our nations today. I would like the district to make changes for me and the next generations of natives. We can be the change, we can be better for our future native youth. I want to ask the district to help get native teachers, counselors, advocates, any of these things to help us learn more about our native culture. Please give us more opportunities to be natives through teachers, support, lessons, sports, artwork, res- res- I can't say that word.
Representation.
That. Someone who looks like me and understands me. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Um, now the board will share in reading of the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. Director Enda, can we start, start with you?
David Douglas School District Proclamation, proclaiming the month-long celebration of National Native American Indian Heritage Month in November. Whereas, Native American Indians are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of what is now the United States, the first Americans and?
Whereas, the Native Americans were the first stewards of our environment, contribute to the unique identity of the Pacific Northwest. Represented the early voices for the values that define our nation and?
Whereas, we cannot ignore nor erase the consequences of our country's long and unfortunate history of violence, discrimination and deprivation of the Native Americans. But we can commit to working together for a bright future and?
Whereas, Native American Indians maintain vibrant cultural heritage, rich traditions and hold a deeply rooted sense of community and?
Whereas, there are seventy-one non-Hispanic Native American Indian Alaskan Native students enrolled as students in David Douglas School District. And there are five hundred and eighty-two students who self-identify as ethnically and or racially Native American, Alaskan Native. Students representing fifty-three tribes or bands from across the nation and?
Whereas, the district's Native American Parent Advisory Council continues its efforts to increase native family engagement. By forming strong relationships in a culturally appropriate way. And to provide feedback and guidance to district leaders on improving outcomes and providing opportunities for Native American youth in the district and?
Whereas, the district has adopted equity policy that states our commitment to closing the achievement gap for indigenous peoples. And creating an educational environment where all students can benefit equally from the educational programs offered and?
I think I'm gonna go back to a piece that was skipped, whereas we can, is it not skipped? Thank you, sorry, alright. Whereas, uh, the, the district is working towards eliminating the racial predictability and disproportionality on all aspects of education and articulated action steps. In the adopted district strategic plan and district equity plan and?
Whereas, the district proclaims every second Monday of October to be Indigenous Peoples' Day as an opportunity to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people of this land. To celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous peoples of our, of our region. And to stand in solidarity with indigenous peoples elsewhere and?
Now, therefore I, Heather Franklin, Chair of the David Douglas School Board of Directors, do hereby proclaim the month-long celebration of Native American Indian heritage in the David Douglas School District to occur, to occur in the month of November. Be it further resolved that the David Douglas School Board of Directors strongly encourages our staff and community to observe, recognize and celebrate the culture, heritage and contributions of Native Americans to our country, our state, our cities and our schools.
Thank you. So I, I just wanted to quickly, first of all, thank the entire team that came up and shared a little bit. Uh, but I want to specifically just reach out to Travis and say thank you. Takes a lot of courage for you to come up and speak your convictions, your passion. As a sophomore, um, just wow. So I, I truly want to say thank you, thank you for requesting. Um, and even challenging the people around this table to do better, right? To, to, to develop systems to recognize better. You deserve it, our students deserve it, all Native Americans deserve, uh, deserve it. And you're speaking on their behalf is huge. So I just want to recognize that, thank you for that. And I have the privilege of meeting with our high school principal tomorrow and I'll be bringing this to her to start that conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you Travis. Um, okay, we're a little ahead of schedule, so hopefully everyone's here from Prosper Portland, next on our agenda. Welcome.
Yeah, I'll pass it over to you guys. Good evening, uh, David Douglas School Board and Superintendent Richardson, it's so nice to be here. Um, I have been working with Frida now for the last three and a half years and with Ken and Pat, uh, among others. And it's a, a delight to finally be here in front of you in person. Um, my name is Joel DeValcourt, I am a project manager at Prosper Portland and I am the Gateway District Manager. Among many other subtitles and esoteric things I can say. Um, I am joined by Saul from Street Soccer USA and Wandy with Unity Football Training. And we are gonna kind of take you through a little bit of the background and process and then work our way towards a quote-unquote proposal. And then obviously we'll take questions from you all and we very much look forward to the discussion. So, um, hopefully, uh, we can do this quickly, but given we have a few extra minutes, uh, perhaps you'll give us, um, a few extra minutes to cover the significant history that we've had getting here tonight. Um, so we're gonna start with a little bit about the timeline and background of the infrastructure projects that are ongoing. Um, around and on the Elks Club, uh, property at Ninety-Ninth and Pacific. Um, a very brief intro to the Gateway Action Plan, which was adopted by City Council last year. Um, and is our, essentially our participatory budget that we developed with community and, um, Frida was the co-chair of that. Um, and then we have our proposal and then we're gonna do a little bit, um, of a share from Street Soccer USA and Unity Football so that you get a sense of their organizations, their priorities, why they're here, why we, uh, believe that this is a winning team. Um, and then of course, we will have ample opportunity for discussion. Alright, next slide please. Okay, so you don't need to read everything on the slide, uh, but it takes us all the way back to two thousand, uh, when the City Council adopted the Opportunity Gateway Concept Plan. Um, uh, the district in two thousand and fifteen, as long as our dates are correct, uh, acquired the Elks Club property. Um, and then we have worked in various ways, uh, you know, fifteen years back plus, uh, to activate that site along with, uh, other folks. There have been developers, there have been, uh, landowners, educational institutions, um, of a variety of sorts. And, and we are now twenty years after the demolition of the residential, um, apartments that were at one hundred and second and Pacific. Um, and the Elks Club Lodge, you know, unfortunately has, um, also met its demise. Um, and so in two thousand and twenty-two, as, uh, you may, uh, know, uh, at least in previous iterations of the board. Um, we worked to come up with a three million dollar contribution to infrastructure around that property. So that we can, uh, one, take care of some immediate, uh, public infrastructure needs that were in the area as well as contribute to what would be, we hope, a future elementary school at that location. Um, and we, uh, currently have an ongoing IGA with PBOT and we are working on, um, the delivering northeast one hundredth, which will, I'll show you a map in a second, which bisects the site. Um, and then last year, we adopted our Gateway Action Plan with funding to actually specifically target, um, activation of the Elks Club property. Based on community input and the needs of the district. Um, and then just earlier this year, Prosper acquired the five-acre property just to your east. Um, which joins the property and, and it will be, uh, next to the new road that is being constructed. Next slide please. So this is the map. On the left, uh, in blue is the David Douglas School Site. In yellow is now the property owned by Prosper Portland, so we're neighbors. Um, and on the right is the two thousand and nine, uh, Master Streets Plan. It's the thing that requires new street infrastructure in the area on any new development. And it was what was, um, in two thousand and nineteen when the district first submitted its site plans. Uh, it was what was requiring the, this district to put in several million dollars in public infrastructure. Next slide. Uh, this is a rendering on the left and a site plan on the right of what we are proposing to do in the site. We are currently working in the challenging economic conditions that we're in. We're working on refinancing what will hopefully be three hundred new, uh, uh, workforce housing, uh, middle income, uh, units that will serve families for sure, um, and others in the district and may have some, uh, improvement for the likelihood of a future elementary school, which of course would be what we hope. Um, so we expect that, uh, you know, within the next few years, we will move forward with groundbreaking. But the delivery of those streets and, and sidewalking infrastructure will be before those housing units get constructed. Next slide please. Uh, this is, uh, just a, a very, just a great slide with numbers. Uh, this is about a six point one million dollar investment in infrastructure around those sites. And this is just a breakdown to show that Prosper is contributing three and a half million. PBOT is putting in almost two million. Um, and then we anticipate the developer to put in the remaining funds to complete, um, a section of northeast Oregon. Which is not required by the district, but would be a contribution at least somewhat to the street network in the area. Next slide please. Uh, and the next slide. So last year, we, uh, adopted again a five-year action plan, so this would roughly go from two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-nine, two thousand and thirty. Um, and just wanted to highlight that we have, um, in many ways, as an, as an agency, the city's Economic Development Agency, looked to new ways to encourage, um, things that are kind of tend to be outside of our primary, um, uh, ways we finance things, way that we do things. Um, and so that, that highlighted bullet point at the, second from bottom is to encourage intermuses and activations. It was one of the highest things that kind of associate with public safety and the opportunity for community to have some kind of control over an environment, which has gone through some really large challenges. And now with the closure of Fred Meyer's, that location is even more kind of dire in need of, um, of life. And of stability and of bringing hope, I think, not just to students, but also adults, visitors. Um, and those that are aging in the neighborhood as well, there's a fairly large, um, aging community. Um, and so it's, again, this was really the kind of the drive was to have this very unique take on how we do redevelopment. Um, and how we stabilize, uh, what many see as kind of the front door to, to East Portland. Next slide please. And so just wanted to highlight here that our budget, the two point three, uh, which is, uh, two to three major property activations. This was really targeted at being able to fund, um, uh, a pretty significant public activation at this Elks Club property. Next slide please. Alright, now let's, let's jump into the good stuff here. So, um, next slide please. So, uh, you know, at, at the, at the kind of, the base level here is that the Elks Lodge, you know, we know that the district may not be able to deliver on a new bond measure for maybe a decade, decade and a half. Um, and in the interim, it is of great importance, I think, both to the district. You know, to have something good happening there so that it's not just an eyesore, but an actual risk and liability. Um, as well as an opportunity to do something in the interim that lifts up students, um, across the age spectrum in the Gateway Community, but throughout East Portland, throughout the district. And this is really a perfect location where we can actually deliver what is already expected to be onsite. Um, and do it ten or more years before there could be a school. Um, and I think that this is a really unique opportunity where it doesn't, um, it doesn't affect your bottom line at all right now. Um, and that's why I'm excited about this team that we have. So, uh, Street Soccer USA, uh, Saul will be speaking, um, on behalf of them. And, uh, he, he and the organization would be the primary operator under this scenario. Um, Unity Football would be the, uh, partner operator. And so the two of them have a signed MOU in place that kind of links their two nonprofits so that they can serve across, uh, their populations. But also kind of lean on Street Soccer USA's national reputation, national ability to do leases like this across the country. Um, and so it's this wonderful kind of local and national relationship that Prosper, as the primary funder, um, is really looking to, to kind of step forward and, and put this forward. Uh, so the proposal that you, I believe, had done at your executive session, um, as well as this, is it kind of, is anticipating that this would be the structure? We have, uh, also a great, you know, faith that if you would prefer Prosper to be the primary, um, like leaseholder, that we would be comfortable to do that as well. So, you know, that's just to kind of jump ahead a little bit, but as you think about these slides, you can think about, would we want Prosper to hold that lease? So that you don't have concerns around what happens if a nonprofit is no longer there? Which we don't think is gonna be happening, but we want to make sure that you're confident in, in the arrangement and Prosper's not going anywhere. Uh, next slide please. Alright, I'm gonna turn it over to Saul, he's gonna have an opportunity to go over some of the, the proposal details and then some of the site alternatives.
Hello and thank you for having me here. I really appreciate you guys taking time out of your day. So like Joel said, I'll just go over a few points. So, Street Soccer USA has actually already, um, entered into many long-term agreements, ten-year lease agreements with other schools and other organizations across the country, including projects in New York and Los Angeles. And we're just trying to continue that and do something here in Portland. Uh, Prosper Portland's financial investment enables the construction of a high-quality community asset with no additional funds required by the David Douglas School District. All day-to-day management and maintenance would be governed by street soccer, um, as well as unity football training. Right now, Street Soccer USA, PDX, our chapter, has a budget of ten thousand dollars annual for maintenance and upkeep of the field. The field and the classrooms, as well as clubhouses, seen below, you'll see them in a bit. Do come with turf, walls, netting, lighting, all that can be adjusted to fit the neighborhood's needs. And, um, as well as, ah, the soccer field's investment will be tailored to fit the existing David Douglas, uh, s- school district site plan for future elementary school, as long as you guys are still trying to do that, so yes. Uh, next slide please. And then, yes, so this is the proposed offer or proposed design that we saw a while back. As you can see, we did highlight that soccer field and the location is kind of where we're trying to build our field. Um, if you can go to the next slide. Uh, we do have four options that we've proposed. So this is the first one, it would be a full-size eleven V eleven pitch that would require some tree removal. As well as space for a clubhouse or classrooms, as you can see in the blue boxes. Um, next slide. The second option would be another full-size eleven V eleven pitch that would also require tree removal, but also allow space for two small side pitches with clubhouse. Um, next slide. Next slide. And this is our preferred proposed design alternative, which is a slightly smaller, more condensed eleven V eleven full size pitch. That would also allow us space to create three mini pitches. As you can see, as well as space for clubhouse or classrooms. Next slide. And this is our fourth option, which is six mini sized pitches with minimal impact to the space. As well as space for clubhouse and classrooms. Next slide. A little bit about Street Soccer USA. I've actually been with the program for quite some time now. I started off. Playing in high school and was allowed to join a community practices where they just kind of have open play. Were able to come in and play. I've been with the and then I went to college, came back and actually started off as a coach three years ago. And now I'm the program director, so it's kind of a full circle moment for me. And it really means a lot to me since I'm hoping that a lot of kids that go through our programs will also have opportunities or learn the skills they need. In order to keep moving forward in life. Our mission statement is to fight poverty and strengthen communities through soccer. Next slide. A little bit more about Street Soccer USA. It is a national nonprofit. That operates in sixteen different cities and has been around since two thousand and nine. We also provide soccer for more than seventy-five thousand historically marginalized youth. Our vision is to fight poverty and strengthen communities through soccer. The mission is to provide the American youth living below the poverty line access to soccer. They need too often, young people lack safe, affordable places to play close to home. Our solution, street soccer parks are purposely built, small sided fields designed for schools and city spaces. More than just fields, they are hubs for connection, helping young people develop confidence and discipline. And teamwork on and off the pitch. Next slide. A little more about street soccer. So currently, our our chapter here in Portland. Currently, are we host a variety of different programs and networking events? So we do Community Club, which is basically just. An open play for high schoolers as well as middle schoolers and elementary kids. Everything is free to play. Like I said, we work with elementary school kids as well as high schools and adults. Parks and programs, we still offer everything free. We have a lot of connections within the Portland area with other nonprofits. Where we all collaborate on tournaments, games. And etcetera, as well as, you know, have business opportunities and diversify the revenue stream. We also have wraparound support. Systems such as social, social services, workforce development, college readiness and other programs that we see our community needs. Next slide. A little. Street Soccer USA has actually launched a twenty-six for two thousand and twenty-six initiative campaign to build twenty-six. Street Soccer Parks and Learning Centers across the country. Currently, we have open parks in San Francisco, Sacramento, Manhattan, Brooklyn, the Bronx, Denver, and our last. And Kansas is in Kansas City is in December. Those are a few of the pitches we've actually made. One is Kansas City, as well as the other one being in Denver. Next slide. Why it's important to build a field here in Portland for street soccer to help out with. It would be because the community impact would be amazing. A dedicated soccer field will help provide a safe, accessible space for local. Youth and families to stay active, build teamwork and strengthen community connections. The youth development is also super important. Having our own field will allow us to expand our youth programs, host local leagues. And give kids a positive, healthy outlet close to home. Accessibility and growth, a local field means more practice time, less travel time. And the ability to welcome more players, families, as we continue to grow as a soccer community. Next slide. And these are a few pictures of the projects we've done recently. If you can go ahead and just scroll through. So this is two mini sized pitches in San Francisco. We actually do really high quality turf and as you can see in the middle, there's a. Storage unit slash clubhouse that we call and a lot of other amenities with bathrooms, porter potties. Open space theater and then next slide. This is another opening of one of our fields down in Manhattan, New York. Tim Howard is actually on our Board of Directors and he was there to open the field and give us a few words. Next slide. And this is the latest project we actually finished, which is also in Brooklyn, New York. So we were able to build two. Mini sized pitches right behind the school. They're both turf, they have nets, they have lights, they have goals and they can expand into a bigger pitch. As well as a clubhouse in the corner that's blue. That also provides classroom space for any other activities the school wants to do or that we provide. Next slide. And then this is the inside of one of our clubhouse. As you can see, it's pretty big. It offers a lot of space for all kinds of events that we run or just, you know, a chill space for students and kids and adults. Next slide. These are a few of our local sponsors. We need to update this because I promise you, there's a lot more people that we work with. But these are a few, and if you go to the next slide. These are our big national and regional partners. So Unique Glow, I don't know if anyone has heard of them, but they're. Pretty amazing and they've been working with us for quite some time, as well as Visa, Bank of America, A T and T. And we have some pretty big soccer clubs out there. For anyone that's soccer fans, B V B is a very big soccer club. We also have had a many Syria, Syria legendary players that have retired, come out to our events. We work very closely with Colorado Rapids, as well as Austin and Nashville, since we've built fields in their location. And we also work with the U S Men's National Team and with the World Cup coming up. We actually have partnerships with those cities that will be hosting games.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Saul. Thank you, Joel. And thank you, everybody, for this moment. I am Wandi Ali. I am the Executive Director of Unity Football Training. Unity Football Training has been around since two thousand and nineteen and it's been. It's been managed and supported by volunteers. Everybody that's part of Unity is a volunteer until today. And we're gonna continue to, you know, push for more more volunteers. Hopefully, some of you can eventually come out and see us. If you could scroll to the next slide, please. When you think about Unity, I saw that Unity sign on the wall and then. I heard everybody talk about something, you know, which brings everybody together to kind of just. Build a stronger community. So the quote, you know, that we have an African proverb. That we go by and practice daily, weekly, since the beginning of this journey. It says, if you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, go together. And we're trying to build a village in the East Portland. Next slide, please. Which, you know, which leaves, you know, leads us to our mission. In the east side of Portland, you know, there is, there's a lot of needs for the kids and the communities of. Low income and immigrants. And our mission is to improve the quality, you know, the quality of life through soccer. For the youth and families of immigrants and low income minority communities. And it's big. Have you guys, as you guys have seen that, you know, on the east side of Portland, I felt like we're we're the forgotten community. And so and that's what we're trying to change in this area. Which leads us to our mission. Our mission is to, is to basically through soccer, youth will enhance their cognitive and motor skills. While engaging with peers in the community games and tournaments. The goal is to boost their creativity, cognitive abilities, self initiative and positive self image. And and it's important that. At Unity, we support everybody, including immigrants, refugee, low income. Low low income youth by fostering teamwork and also cultural identity. Knowing who they are, where they come from and embracing that. Since in the impact that we have within the community since two thousand and nineteen, we gradually grown. You know, it took us some time, but now we're we're serving over a hundred and fifty children annually. And it's, you know, it's it's something that we had to like, not only just. Create the space, but also educate the families, the parents, that this is important for their children. Because a lot of, a lot of parents that, at least even based on even. Even coming from my own background itself, you know, educating the families and parents about health, it went us through soccer. It was some, it was a journey and the fact that we're serving over a hundred and fifty children today, it's a lot. We not only foster soccer skills, but also we mentorship, we mentor, personal development and community belonging. And that's something that, you know, Jamal has shared earlier. He actually goes to David Douglas High School, David Douglas High School. And and last year, he was, I think, sorry, I didn't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but. He was a little shy to try out for the team, but this year he ended up trying out for the team and made varsity. And he was with Unity from the beginning to build his, you know, his ability, confidence. And and now we're here, you know, and and those are kind of impact that we want to encourage because, you know, through sports, there's a lot you could do. Next slide, please. This is the challenging part. Obviously, you guys, you guys understand that. You know, there's not a lot of fields on the east side of Portland where you could just go out there and, you know, play. And, you know, under the lights. Also, you know, as you could see on the, on the, on the pictures that. You know, there are times when we practice at nighttime, there are times when we practice on just on a sock, on a grass field. And there are times when we practice at the park. You know, sometimes we have to pick up needles. As coaches, you know, and sometimes you have to pick up, you know, a dog. Poop. And so, you know, those are the kind of like challenges that we go through on a weekly basis. So a dedicated soccer field will provide consistent access, improve. Training quality and foster broader community engagement and a greater sense of belonging for the players. And it's it's important that. In that we create those kind of spaces for our for our youth going forward. Unity has always needed a space. From the beginning and as of right now, we we're sharing field spaces, you know, whether that is, you know, through public space. Or school. Next slide, please. Through it all, though, you know, we do have got, we do, we we have some great support. Within the Portland community and one of the, you know, one of the supporters of Street Soccer USA and. As well as African family holistic health organizations, veterans for students. And and lastly, the Portland Community Football Club, which allows us to be able to play against other teams. So I'm here today on behalf of Unity to invite you guys, so that we can create a brighter future. We want to invite the school board to support the creation of this soccer field. Ensuring consistent access, better opportunities for our youth. Together, I believe, you know, we can promote well being. And strengthen our disadvantaged communities. And if there are any other clubs around, like David Doug School, David Doug Soccer Club. We want to be part of that journey as well. And so, yeah, thank you for your time and.
Thank you all. Now it's in your hands.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up to questions and discussion.
I have one question. You mentioned wraparound supports in the slide and I was just wondering if you could give some specific examples to what those sometimes look like?
Yeah, definitely. So we have a variety of people we work with from, like I said, elementary school kids. To high schoolers, middle schoolers, some adults. We've just been on an amazing journey to meet new people, you know, hear their stories, hear about what they need sometimes, you know. Right now, it's very, very crazy, so we try to support our students with whatever we can, as well as their families, whether that's knowledge. Legal services, you know, a plan just in case anything happens, as well as food. We're working with a lot of food kitchens right now where we send our coaches to volunteers and we get some of our kids. To come volunteer and help out, but we also work to try to, you know, find people what they need, if they need something outside of that. That we can't provide, but we know someone who can and those people we've worked with in the past. So that's kind of what we do.
Thank you. I, so I think this is a Street Soccer USA question, because you showed us examples of where you've set up fields. Around the country. Are any. Were any of those ones that were kind of set up in this way where it's like, is the temporary nature of it? Did it come into any of the other projects?
Yes, actually, we have a few. So we're doing, our biggest supporter right now is New York because that's where our national office is. So we've worked with their school district and creating four different fields. And, you know, having a long term contract with them and obviously we have that set in place. And we've continued to work with them and they're actually, they've loved the work we've done and so we have two more projected to come in very soon. But yes, we've done it there as well as Denver and I mean, we've done big projects with. Other cities and their parks and recs organizations and we've so done similar things to this. But yeah, we've had a couple of different spaces where we've done this before.
Along those lines, have you had a transition yet where you've done a handoff of a temporary?
Yes, yeah. So once again, I would bring up the New York one. That's where we kind of did the same thing and unfortunately, I did not have the pictures for that. But it was kind of similar to where the field is very close, just since everything's so tight there. Similar to that, it was two mini soccer pitches kind of right next door to the school, I think even behind it, I guess, kind of like that. And then we also set up that storage container unit that we used as a clubhouse and a storage unit, but they ended up converting into a classroom. And I don't know if you've seen that done before, but I've seen that quite a few times here.
And then. Could you clarify again which plan was the preference?
The third option.
And then, and then why that one?
Yeah, I can, I can take that one. Few more back or forward, I guess, actually. Few more, few more. All right, two more. There we go. So this is the one I think that would meet all the needs at the same time. So. The site plan had a full sized pitch in the middle of the district's property, which is where this would be located. I think one of the things that Frida and I have talked about before are permits and how fun that is. To remove trees in Portland is a huge deal. It is political. It has ended up in budget hearings. This would have the least impact on tree removal and something that we've talked about a number of times is. How difficult it is to find a soccer field where parents or other kids can hang out under a nice tree and get some shade. While kids are playing. And so being able to use that northwest corner at ninety-ninth and Pacific, potentially has picnic tables. There have been partnerships with Street Soccer where they have worked with food carts. So being able to activate a place where families can feel comfortable and safe and get food, which is not easy. Is kind of a win, win, win. And then being able to put to, if I think all goes well, do another mini pitch. In that northeastern corner, which also has very little tree impacts, would give the ability to do multiple types. Of football training. So that's small kind of footsall style, as well as the full eleven by eleven. So we may be able to offset having to have less tree removal permit cost fees with an opportunity to do a kind of a field and a half. Any other thoughts from you guys?
Yeah, well, to add on to the big pitch. The big pitch, the the level V eleven field would allow everybody to go and play at all at once. So you could be. You know, tan and then you could create your own little field there. Adults can create a little field in the middle. So you can have a like a mixture of like variety of like individuals just being out there, just working on their health. And we're also like, you know, thinking, you know, thinking through creating maybe like pickups throughout the whole week. So that the community can come and be active as well on that big pitch.
Yeah, I think one A makes a good point, which is the reason why we're not just doing one nonprofit. Yeah, I think one A makes a good point, which is the reason why we're not just doing one nonprofit. Is that having additional capacity from two nonprofits that have an agreement with each other. Can add the ability for programming to take place over a larger stretch of time. I think the biggest thing is that we don't want, um, kind of a dead field in the middle of a district that already has too little going on. And so being able to do extra programming and potentially work with other partnerships. To activate the site as much as we possibly can, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Is really the advantage that the district needs as well as the families that would be frequenting this. Um, so I think that that's kind of a big part of why we like the idea of having multiple ways to program the space. Um, and why we think, I think it would also serve the needs of the district, uh, in the meantime.
This question is for Prosper. So it, the housing that you shared, um, you're planning for, for housing on the site that's yours.
Yeah.
Um, do you have a timeline for that? Like, are you talking, you're gonna start five years out, six years out, ten years out, next year?
Ideally, we'd be breaking ground in two years. So the developer that was, uh, had a proposed project, um, on there. Uh, is still the developer with us right now. And again, it was a matter of refinancing and troubling economic times. Yeah, I'm sure you've seen it many, many times. Making development work in East Portland is a challenge and so. Prosper, uh, Kenan has heard this a number of times, has had Pat, uh, in our discussions is making it work. Is our highest priority. We would not have spent the, the bill that we would on land that the private sector could take care of had it not been. For the, the desperate need to stabilize that property. So, uh, those are kind of the best case scenarios within two years. Um, and, and so we have a significant investment in making that work. Um, so that, that's what I can say right now. The advantage is because we are now the neighbor. Um, for the district, I think we have a closer alignment. We don't have to play with a third private party. Um, and so again, we are going to be delivering all of those public infrastructure improvements in the meantime.
Yeah.
Um, and that I think sets the stage for ongoing activity at the site for the foreseeable future.
So we're not, um, first, first rule of the executive session is you don't talk about what happens in executive session. However, I will say that, you know. Uh, we, we think a good, this is a good use, um, of a space that we own. Um, my concerns were the one that you brought up around the leasing.
Yeah.
And also around the timeline, the ten-year lease because right now we're down in enrollment. We don't, we're not needing another school. If your plan is to build workforce housing and you have all those units there and they're family units. We're gonna need an elementary or we're gonna need school probably before ten years. Um, and one of our bond, um, uh, falls off in less than ten years and so. That, that's the other thing that, um, I think we'd have to talk about, um, with that space in my opinion. For me to vote for it.
I can certainly address those right now. One, again, if it makes it easier for the transition for the district to hold that lease with Prosper. In which case, there's gonna be a school does what school does with its own property clause either way. But if it makes the district more comfortable that we do that so that we hold that space, especially as neighboring part, property owners. We're perfectly comfortable doing that. Um, I think that the advantage that there is. In creating a, a contract just with the nonprofits themselves is that you just don't have to have us kind of managing. A multiple-partyed contract, which we've done with the district before and it's super fun and it doesn't always work.
No, you're right.
Yeah.
I also think though about like liability. I think, you know, ten thousand dollars a year for security sounds like a lot, but I will tell you. I've seen the bills that Pat asked for, that's not a lot, especially given the, the neighborhood. Um, and I know you're able to pull more like insurance and, and, and covering basically anything that might happen than a nonprofit would be.
Yeah.
Um, having been a, a nonprofit development director myself. However, yes to all of it. It, it's awesome.
Yeah, it's in the details and, and so I don't know how, one, hopefully you will invite us back. Uh, for an action and, and, and however, we want to proceed to articulate some of those concerns and with this, with your attorney. Um, and other district staff, um, uh, we are totally, we're, you know, willing to, to, to hammer out any of those details. I think as. Much as we want, we want the district to be happy with this proposal on, on all levels.
I am curious, um, in continuation with your question, has ten thousand dollars traditionally been sufficient to maintain? Um, the facility and security?
At certain areas, yes, where it's smaller, obviously when, if it was to go with our preferred option, we would be able to increase that amount. Like I said, we are a national organization, so that's where it kind of benefits us because we do have resources to pull in. And they are very excited about this opportunity. So their eyes are on us and would love to support us in whatever way possible. As well as like, we have other revenues of income that can help provide that extra money for whatever we need, but yeah.
I'm also very excited about this. Uh, what I'm less excited about is at some point, we're gonna be jerks and kick you out. And I, and, and I, I don't want to be a jerk and kick you out without thinking now what that looks like. So that like, if we vacate an elementary school. You move there or what, or whatever, or, or whatever. But I just like, like it's the district and the board, whoever they are then. Just to start thinking now about what that transition looks like.
Okay, definitely. I think one thing I will say about that, we work with a lot of elementary schools. I don't know if that was, you know, if that was to happen, that'd be great. But we have a lot of after-school programs, so I'm sure we could collaborate in something, in some way and still support you guys. Because at the end of the day, we want to be there for the kids and they're living right there. They're used to us. It'd be great to, you know. Continue that partnership and have them come and be like, Coach, oh, oh my God, like I remember, you know, when I first started kicking the ball and now. Look at me, I'm going pro. Look at me, I'm going to college. Look at me, I got my first job. So there's a lot of possibilities and exciting.
To, to add on to that, you know, by, by then, you know, we'll, we'll have a stronger relationship with the school district. So then we could basically be flexible to like figure out another way to help the community as well. Oh, yeah. So Buckman, yeah. There's a, there's a, there's a open field, um. It's called the Buckman Field. I don't know if you guys are familiar with it. Um, it's an open space for majority of the day, um, from morning until. Uh, probably like five or six o'clock and then there's another group that comes in to do some other activities. But what, in that space, every day of the week, from nine AM until three PM, there's always somebody. And half of those people come from the East Portland. They go there so then whether it's during their, uh, lunchtime or in the morning. They go there to just, just because that's the only space they could, they can go and, and, and be, be part of something or exercise.
Yeah, and, and the students that are at Benson. Use like half the field while the other ones are using half the field. So the advantage is you can kind of see it at other schools already in. In PPS that there's a kind of that arrangement if it turned out that that was something the district wanted to do. Um, yeah, I think that those are fair concerns. No one wants you guys to be jerks. And that's why we want to be responsive. Again, if you wouldn't mind putting one slide back so we can, um. Uh, you know, this again would allow the school to do that entire southern portion, which is where it was anticipated for that. And still have room on the northern side. And if the, you know, you wanted to keep the big field but not have the mini pitch. Like those are all details that I think would not, uh, make or break anything that the district wanted to do. Even within the tenure frame, if you did advance upon, which my goodness, wouldn't that be fantastic?
Or we could just build the school up.
That's right, build it right over it.
Underneath. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for coming. Um, I think some of my questions were asked. Uh, some of my questions I'll be maybe sending to Pat ahead of time because I think they're executive session questions. Um, but I look forward to that conversation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
Really awesome, yeah.
Okay, um, now it is Brooke, your turn for a data report.
Yeah, it's not quite as exciting as, um, soccer and fields and everything, but, um, something we are passionate about. Um, so we'll wait for Sandy, um, to talk about state assessment results. This is the first time I've been giving this report. Um, as you know, assessment moved over into the curriculum and instruction department. So what I would like to do today is give you a little bit of context before we just start looking at student scores and outcomes. To understand the assessment, the importance of the assessment and how it relates to our state accountability system. And how schools are designated as schools and improvement. Cause there's a lot that goes into it for sure. Um, this is a summative assessment. It's part of a comprehensive balanced assessment. System in David Douglas and in districts across the state. If you remember last month, we had, um, Rochelle, our math tosa and Francesca. Our English Language Arts tosa, teacher on special assignment. Come and they presented data to you that was what we call screening data. Um, this is summative data. So what we're looking at is the State Board of Education adopts standards and content areas. Which students are expected to know and be able to do. And then what this test is meant to do, you guys adopt materials or you approve the adoption of materials. That are aligned to the standards. We teach using those materials. We teach to the standards. And then we assess students to see, can they transfer in a different context? That's the true definition of proficiency. It is, can you take what you've learned and can you be proficient in a different context? So there's a lot of feelings around the, um, the test and the assessment and, um. That being said, it is a key component of our state accountability system. And if you've heard about Senate Bill one forty-one. This test matters and we want to elevate the importance of it, um, so that. Again, we can meet the requirements of that bill and we can have schools that are not designated as improvement. Okay, that's a big lead in. So again, this is the summative assessment. It assesses grade level standards. As I mentioned, it is an annual assessment that is required in every grade three through eight. And then in eleventh grade. It assesses English Language Arts, the acronym you'll hear is ELA. Um, math and science. However, science is only assessed at grades five, eight and eleven. For state accountability purposes, we don't look at science. I don't know why, but we only look at English Language Arts and math. Um, and within that, there's math growth and math achievement. For purposes of this report, um. Because of, of the shorter timeframe, I'm only gonna talk about achievement today. Um, but we can come back and do, um, growth a little bit later if you'd like. Okay, next slide. Um, I want to start with participation because I think it's important before we look at scores that we look at participation. Cause it definitely affects the validity of the scores and what we're seeing. Um, so if you can go to the next slide, Sandy. Um, so how this works and on our state accountability report is students who, um. Are enrolled in the first day of May must participate in statewide assessments. The rates is a three-year average. So the state takes three-year average and they give us a participation target within those three years. Uh, schools, we were asking that you hit ninety-four point five percent participation. Of your all-student group and all your student groups underneath. The importance of that when you're looking at the data is. If participation falls below this rate, non-tested students beyond the five percent threshold are counted as not met. Which can lower achievement rates and contributed to targeted support, TSI, which is our state designation for schools and improvement designations. So we have to look at participation rates because it matters when we look at the scores. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is a big, what I'm hoping to do is kind of start big and then narrow down. So this is just an overall participation. Ta, uh, passing the state test is at levels three and level four. That is what we're aiming for. Um, so you can see in this for ELA participation, the third through fifth grade band. You could see the percentage of students across all of our schools that hit that threshold and that participation rate. Same for math. You could look at the different grade bands. Obviously you can see as we go up in the grade levels, our participation rate goes down. This is really important to note, um, especially when we get to high school. This test doesn't count for graduation. It doesn't count for grades. So sometimes it's hard to convince a high schooler that this is important. Um, or even sometimes with staff because it seems like, why do we, why do we have to do this? But again, this is the measure that the state uses to compare us to other districts across the state. It's the one thing that they have and we know you never take anything based on one assessment, but this is the biggest assessment that we're using. Um, next slide please. This is if you look at school and you look by student group. And you can see where we met that ninety-five percent threshold and where we did not for each student group. There are a variety of factors for this. Um, it could be opt-out. Um, because families have the right to opt their student out of the assessment. Um, it could be students that didn't finish the assessment, uh, maybe absentee and they weren't met. Or it could also be, um, students that are in outside placements that didn't take the test. So all of that counts. If you're looking at the high school. Lumped into the high school is Fur Ridge and DDOA. So, um, the state doesn't tease them out. They are deemed, um. One school with two separate programs. So they are all lumped together there. So participation, I want to say is something we are gonna be mindful of this year, something we are gonna work on. I know our principals are committed. We just want to understand how this plays into our outcomes and our accountability a little bit more. And you could see the top row there is, um, English Language Arts and the bottom is math, just so you can see the difference. Next slide, please. So now we're gonna go into each content area, language arts, math, and then science. So English Language Arts, you can go to the next slide. We shared this last month at the presentation. What does a level three and a level four really mean? So I want to point out, level three. Is students consistently demonstrate proficient grade level knowledge and skills with a broad range of complexity. So that's what we need to pass. When you get to that level four, it's students consistently demonstrate advanced grade level knowledge and skills. Uh, with a deep understanding and full range of complexity. When you look at level two, because you'll see we have level ones and level twos. Twos, they might still have a foundational knowledge of grade level content and one is they do not. Consistently demonstrate the grade level skills. So I think that's important to know when looking at the next chart. Okay, so, let me go to the next slide, please. Oh, for ELA, I want you to know, what is assessed? What does that even mean? So there's four different claims for reading, writing, listening and speaking. These are examples. It depends on the grade level and what their grade level standards are, but. Um, again, want to give a little bit of context so you can see what might be assessed. In reading, you might be asked to analyze text structure, language and meaning. In writing, you might need to use evidence to support opinions or analysis. In listening, you might need to evaluate speaker's claims and word choice. And then in speaking, you might be asked to integ- um. Integrate evidence to support conclusions. So lots of skills and content that this is assessing. Next slide. So again, here's just another view of the percentage of students who passed. Combining all of our schools at each grade level with a three and four, but we also wanted to show that level two. Because the level two shows they do have a foundational knowledge. However, those level twos are counted as not passing in our state assessment system. Next slide. And now we look at our schools and what this means. And you can see. The levels one through a level three, again, this is achievement only. You could look at by school. The state does not provide this chart, but we make this chart because we can look at patterns or trends, um, across student groups. So you can see one group, we really want to make sure we're assessing and looking at is our students with disabilities. Across the board and how can we better support that? I want to point out if there is an arrow with an up or a down arrow, it means that the rating has either increased or decreased. Compared to the previous year. So that's really important to know. So I know there's a lot in this chart, uh, but definitely something to look at. Next slide. And also again, this is the one measure that the state can look at across all districts. That's common. So we are curious. How did we do with other east county schools? So you can see these are by the grades, grade three, four and five for English Language Arts. And how did we do in relation to the state? I think you can see we have a lot of work to do in David Douglas, in East County and at the state level, um, with this work. Um, and I will say, you know, this, this, we had a higher emphasis on this work prior to COVID. When COVID happened, it's, it even became probably less emphasis and now with Senate Bill one forty-one and the state accountability measure. It's, it's increased again. So you can see how we did in elementary school. And you can see that. And then we'll look at middle. If you can go to the next slide, Sandy. And then high school. Again, high school is just grade eleven. So not quite at the state, um, but holding steady with the east county. Okay, then we go to look at math. So if you can go to the next slide, follow a very similar pattern. So what is a math assess? The different claims there are concepts and procedures, problem solving, modeling and data analysis. The different claims there are concepts and procedures, problem solving, modeling and data analysis, communicating reasoning. Things that again, this is three through high school, so it varies with their grade level and, and the standards. But students might be asked to use properties and algorithms to solve problems. Or they might need to analyze relationships using data graphs and patterns. Or they might need to critique reasoning and ident- identify errors or misconceptions. Next slide. Here we are again, levels three and four passing for each of our grades in the district. We included that level two. They have some foundational knowledge so that you can see what that looks like. And again, you can see that we do have some work to do. And then if you go to the next slide, you can see all of our schools and where they rated level one, two or three, and if they moved up a level or if they went down a level. And then we'll go to the next slide. And again, how did we do in David Douglas compared with our east county counterparts um, and against the state? So you can see for grades three, four and five at the elementary grade bands. Again, even looking at our state numbers, we have a lot of work to do. If you can see like just grade three, it's still um, only, we never hit even the fifty percent threshold. So I think this is work that everybody's gonna uh, work on and do better. Um, next slide for middle school please. So you can see how we did in middle school. Go seventh grade. I think we're seeing some promising results there and eighth grade as well. And then finally, high school. So this is something again, even at the state, we're less than twenty, twenty percent. So but you know, in comparison with um, some of our other east county schools, um, David Douglas is, is doing better. Okay, science, moving on to science. So next slide. Science is a little bit different. As I mentioned, it is not included in the state accountability for being an improvement, but it's still assessed at five, eight and eleven. At grade five, it's assessing the standards in the third through fifth grade band. If you are tested in grade eight, you're looking at the standards in the sixth through eighth grade band and grade eleven is the high school standards. So students are um, tested in disciplinary core ideas, that's physical life and earth and space science, science and engineering practices, how scientists investigate and build models such as models and constructing explanations and cross-cutting concepts. These are broad ideas like systems, patterns, cause effect and energy flow. Science, um, and we have a lot of work to do. It's going to look a little different. We don't have those graphs because it's, it's just given a little bit different. So Cameron made um, a graph for you that you could see. You met Cameron last month as well. So if you can go to the next slide. These are our elementary um, science. You can see uh, the state at the top versus the district for each of our elementary schools on the left side. And on the right side, you can see the student groups. I think it's fair to say that we have a lot of work to do in science and we're so grateful that you approved the purchase of science instructional materials last year. We've done all the training on that. And we're excited to see hopefully the scores go up and the impact on that. And again, I think everybody's excited about that. If we go to um, eighth grade, next slide Sandy. Again, we want to see those green numbers and we want to see blue. Um, but you can see we're still functioning mainly in the red and the orange, which is level one and level two. Again, the schools on the left and the student groups on the right. Also, I want to say in middle school, I think our um, the, our model with how we serve our English language development, our multilingual learners has changed because I think you can see some of those scores are really low and they will now be in core content. And I hope that really impacts their getting access to core grade level standards. I, we hope to see an impact with those scores. And eleventh grade, next slide please. Okay, and finally, um, as we move on to how does, what does this mean for OSAS, Oregon State Assessment System and targeted school improvement? Excuse me, um, because we do have schools and improvement. So ESSA is the federal accountability. It replaced No Child Left Behind in two thousand fifteen, if you're familiar with that legislation. So it requires states to monitor school performance and ensure equitable outcomes for all of the student groups. So that's our federal. In Oregon, we have our own accountability system and that's OS- OSAS, the Oregon State Assessment System in English Language Arts and Math to measure how each student group is performing. The state looks at that and then they identify based on, um, thank you, certain criteria. Um, which schools are identified for targeted school improvement? That is a whole nother presentation that we are happy to bring to you at another time because um, it can be misleading and it's a little bit complex with how schools get identified. I would encourage you, we would love to bring that presentation to you in a workshop or a board meeting so that we better understand because I think saying a school is an improvement can be misleading unless we understand the designations of how they got there. Um, it's not just based on the assessment, but it's based on um, certain scores. So we would love to bring that. Okay, so who is an improvement based on this assessment? Preliminary. We haven't gotten the final letter from ODE yet. We usually get it around December. So we're expecting it anytime. Um, but how that looks is uh, we already know because we've got what is called an accountability detailed report for each school. That's where I pulled those numbers for you on those charts and it gave a preliminary designation. Are you a school identified for targeted improvement? If you do have a target improvement, you are identified for at least three years because improvement doesn't happen in one year and get out. They, if you improve, they want to know that you can sustain um, all those improvement efforts that you have. So if we go to the next slide, you will see all of our schools um, listed here. Gilbert Heights and Wes Powellhurst have been improvement, but they exited last year. And it is looking like they will not be identified this year. And then you see we have a whole slew in the um, uh, yellow columns there of schools that are identified. And you can see the focal area at the top, they're identified for either ELA achievement, ELA change, math achievement, math change or regular attenders. The high school has some additional designations tied to graduation rate, but that's not tied to OSAS and we couldn't fit it on the page. So we can share that a little bit later too. Um, but you can see why they are identified and the groups for which they're identified. The one school that has not been identified is Cherry Park. Um, but again, you could still see they had some level ones and level twos. So there's work to do all around. The good news about being an improvement is that it comes with funding. So each of these schools has funding and will get funding to do improvement work um, to and they have to work on the groups for which they've been identified and the focal areas for which they've been identified. So I would encourage you to talk to the principals of your liaison schools and ask about this. Ask about their accountability reports, ask about participation, ask about their plans. They all have to have a needs assessment and plans um, to how are they going to get out of improvement? So with that, that is the assessment report for this year. So do you guys have any questions?
Brooke, thank you for that presentation. Um, just uh, one question. Can you remind me what the difference between achievement and change on the very, I guess, penultimate slide, so one before this one?
Yeah, so and we do have some really promising practices with um, change too, with math change. So um, as I understand it, it's the difference between proficient and where that student is, where that student group is performing. So it's growth basically. How are they progressing towards meeting this, the standard um, or hitting those targets? And we do have, I want to say, would love to share that with you. We do have schools that are in levels uh, four and even five in that area too with change. But ultimately, we want to see that translate to achievement, right?
Okay, thanks. And one additional question. For the um, achievement grades broken down by student group, um, why are some groups not rated?
There's not enough students in that student group. So if it was less than twenty, um, it's not rated. Thank you. Very good question.
Thanks.
I meant to say that. Anybody else? Well, thank you so much, Brooke. Did you, no? This is really great. Very helpful. Thank you. All right, good. So moving along, we are now to the consent and giant agenda. So if we can have a motion to bring this.
Would like to move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Um, and now we are open for any discussion. There's a number of things on here, so. Any questions for, I think mostly Pat on the police or anything? No? Okay, well then we can vote. Uh, Director Ender?
Director Ender, I.
Stevenson, I.
C, I.
Germer, just an I.
Jordan, I.
Stevens, I.
Franklin, I.
Okay, great. Um, now we are on to the strategic plan with IDA.
Thank you. So last month during our October board workshop, we had an opportunity to um, come to you with our preliminary um, strategic plan, our current strategic plan. It's coming to an end. So the proposed plan um, that we presented last month, um, consolidated the three uh, major district plans that we have, which is the current strategic plan, our equity plan and our integrated plan. So as Kevin and we want to thank the board for um, for giving us the opportunity to come to you, giving us some insights. Uh, we heard a lot of great feedback, great questions coming from all board members. And um, as a team, as Kevin and team, we're currently reviewing, we're still reviewing your feedback. So um, so today what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you an update of where we are with our strategic plan. I will give you, can we go back to the other slide? Sandy, thank you. Give you an update of where we are. Uh, I will give you an update of our timeline that we are proposing. And that timeline is broken down into four phases so we can be ready to launch our updated strategic plan next school year, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Okay, good. Thank you Sandy. Can you go to the next slide? So this is phase number one. And phase number one, uh, we're currently in phase number one. So we, again, we reviewed the, the three plans. We came, you know, we came to you and um, we are, again, we're reviewing the process we're making. As a cabinet, we are updating um, the plan that we propose. We're also uh, making some edits and adjustments. The plan, the uh, preliminary plan that we propose has four pillars. If you remember the pillars, pillar number one is equity belonging and student voice. Pillar number two is student learning, growth and achievement. Pillar number three, family and community engagement. Pillar number four is health and safe environment. And based on the feedback that we received from you, we are currently discussing the possibility of adding an additional pillar. So a fifth pillar, uh, focus on empowering effective um, educators, educators, sorry. Um, okay, so phase number one, currently November and next month during December, uh, our goal is to finalize another, an updated version. So we can come to you in January of twenty twenty-six um, for your input, for another round of, another review. So can we go to the next slide Sandy? Phase number two, it's the community engagement phase. So we are proposing this phase to take place starting February of next year, twenty twenty-six and ending in May of twenty twenty-six. Um, so we are, we, we want to do, uh, our proposal is to collect the feedback from families, from students, from staff and our community partners. Uh, we will follow a sim- similar model. Um, and I did share this during the board workshop. We will follow a similar model to the one we implemented during our um, integrated plan, community engagement, where we are asking existing groups, leadership groups, student leadership groups, family leadership groups, affinity groups, staff and community partners and admin for input. And that way we can utilize our time efficiently and ensuring that we are hearing from the different diverse voices uh, within our community, all stakeholders. So can we go to the next slide? Phase number three, we're calling the pre-launch, starting in, in June, where we're collecting all this input, continuing to update the plan. Um, it's going to be during this phase, we will be uh, finalizing the design of the plan. And then again, we are coming back to you, to the board to share our final proposal, making sure that we're, we have the time to get, uh, to make the necessary updates based on, based on input. And then the goal is to present to um, our district admin again during the month of August. And then the last phase, can we go to the next slide Sandy? It's the launch phase. And this is um, where we basically want to start the next school year with our updated strategic plan. Um, we would have um, the marketing materials, communicating with families, social, you know, through social media, the website, Parents Square, et cetera, um, to do this launch. And that's, that's all I have. That's all I have today. Are there any questions?
No questions, but that was a great workshop and um, really good job putting this together.
Thank you, thank you. And it's been um, it's been great working with the entire team. We have spent multiple uh, meetings, cabinet meetings, working on, working on this. So, but thank you, thank you for the feedback.
And I'd like to publicly thank IDA for taking leadership role and helping, bringing it to cabinet and working on it and kind of navigating through all this. I also um, want to recognize and I know I don't always do this and I don't want this to be negative, but I do want to just recognize that this is ambitious. Many times strategic plans are a full year and we're, we're going to do it, we're going to get it done. But I just need to recognize that it is ambitious and uh, recognize that there's just a lot going on in our district. I'm not doing, saying that to complain and I'm saying, I just want to be real with the board. I want to be real with everyone at this table that it's a lot. We're going to come together and do it because it's the right work and it's the foundation where we are. Um, but some of these might be flexible on timelines and just different things going on, but we'll get, we'll get there by next fall.
We know you'll put the first things first. We know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now superintendent's report.
Great, thank you so much. Um, so three, I, I would say pretty heavy topics and I don't have a lot of details, but I just want to bring the board up to speed, kind of make sure we're all on the same page. And then one fun topic in with the fun at the end. Um, and it's interesting because two of the topics that I was going to bring attention to in my superintendent's report, we heard during the public to be heard. So one of them has to do specifically with high needs behavior. I've been keeping the board updated in my written updates kind of every other week or so. Um, again, nothing new to report other than it's real and it's continuing. We've tried to go through in my last report I updated, that we actually allocated more staff. Um, that's out of budget staff, that's staff that we know we needed and we approved and we hired some. But it's, it's not enough. The, to be quite honest, the resources we need for the behaviors that, that we're seeing, the students and families that are in trauma, we need more and it just doesn't exist right now. So really our work right now is how do we do things differently, right? We have these resources. If it's not working right now, how we're doing it, how do we do it differently? We haven't landed that. We haven't come up with here's the answer. But we are being very strategic. We're listening to our building administrators. We're listening and partnering with our union leadership. What does this look like? How do we move forward and what can we do differently? Because I don't think, we don't think, but I don't think that it's just this one year bubble, right? I, I think that we have our youth coming up to us that have much more trauma, have addictions to screens. There's a lot of things going on in our community that we're helping to navigate. We want to help navigate. We want to be part of the solution with our families and community. Um, but it, it, it has been difficult. It's been um, it, it's taken its toll on morale, it's taken its toll on staff or admin. It's, there's hard days and I'm sure all of you are with your liaisons talking. I know it's still, and this is a part I really want to focus on, still the joys in schools, the hope in schools, the amazing experience. I know it's still, and this is a part I really want to focus on, still the joys in schools, the hope in schools, the amazing experiences that our community, staff, admin are giving to our kids every single day. But there, there is a cost to all this. I want you to, want you to hear. So, I apologize if that's a little heavy, but again, I want the board to know, and I want our community to know that we're working on it, and we want to come together and do what's right for all of our kids, each kid, every day. So, that's one. Two is, I want to make sure you know, and I know you do, so, but it's just deserves, I believe, some community space and voice. And it was talked about. Alice brought it to our attention, and Ms. Sherman in her testimony. ICE activity in our community has ramped up very quickly. And it's just a reality of what's happening. We are, we are kind of playing whack-a-mole, to be quite honest with you. We're doing everything we can to take every report we can, trying to, trying to confirm its validity, the reality of it, and then what do we do with that? How do we do with that? I want the board to hear, we have had no incidents during a school day where any ICE agents or others have, have been on school property, come into the school. None of that, but there's definitely been valid reports of agents of some sorts or people in uniforms of some sort. It's hard to tell, are they ICE or not? We don't really know. But literally parked at the corner or half a block away. And during this all, I want to thank our community, thank our staff, our administrators, who are all being very responsive and just putting, hey, what can we do to make the school day as normal as possible for our kids, for our youth, while keeping them safe, right? Keep them focused, but also knowing that there's fear, and how do we address that without escalating the fear, right? How do we address and help everyone feel safe without escalating it? And that's, that's a delicate balance that we're learning. We've never done this before. So, literally, we're going through the process. You know, might have heard and seen yesterday Menlo had a confirmed report, and we happen to have two administrators here that just took a lead, and they're just like, well, I think we do this. Yep, let's do that. I think we do this, I think we do. And they did amazing, and the staff did amazing, and our community showed up as a resource as well to say, wait a minute, our schools are safe place. And I want to recognize Perk, many of you guys, Portland International Rights Coalition, thank you very much. Have been amazing partners and have shown up yesterday at Menlo and today in support with EB, Ron Russell, and West Powellhurst, right? No interactions, negative interactions in that support. I want to report that to you, but they have definitely been responsive. How can we help and have been there for our community? So, that feels, feels really good. And, you know, the last thing I'll say is unfortunately, I think many people are trying to help, but sometimes with that help, it comes with inaccuracies. We had a number of reports today through social media that just were not accurate. We had reports yesterday that were not accurate about what we knew was accurate at Menlo, that was just flooded through our community, and who knows how far that social media presence is. But just so you know, that's, that's a challenge, right? That's a challenge to try to stay in front of. Ida, her team, our administrators have done amazing work of communicating, this is what we know. This is, I think, four different communications went out from Menlo Park. Ron Russell and EB and West did at least two today. I mean, so we're trying to communicate what we know is accurate, but sometimes when that communication gets out, it's just, oh, this is real, and this is what, and it just keeps going. So, just want to recognize that as well. Alice mentioned, we did have a training. It was the updated training. She talked about phase one, phase two, phase three. I don't know what phase we're on, but we are learning. Again, this is our first time really going through this, so we're updating the training as fast as we can and continuing to train. It was not just our administrators. We had every supervisor and manager. So, if you think of our transportation department, food service department, grounds, custodial, all of those might have some sort of interaction, and they need this training. So, our supervisors and managers were there to help in that process. And the training is ongoing, so we ended that training with, this is how you sign up to get more trainings within your building, whether it's a specific department, whether it's a whole staff meeting, this is what it looks like. So, we're continuing to roll that out and trying to stay in front of it. As well as partnering with our community organizations, and then finally, our, our labor leadership. Alice mentioned that she's been at the forefront. I think I mentioned, they've, they've talked about the idea of, you know, whether it's MOU proclamations, I mean, they, they want to be engaged. And I've heard from Alice, I hope it's, well, I know she told me, I could say this, that they support the board taking a stand. They're, they, they appreciate that, want to be part of that. So, I hope I did that justice, Alice, but last meeting we had, we talked about that. Okay. And then the last thing, heavy topic is want to make sure you know that we know. ICE, last report, last update, we talked about the state budget, right? So, on Monday, we're gonna be talking about our budget projections, where we're at, and there are gaps. So, a little bit, I think we all know that. We knew that last year going in, passing our budget. But on top of that, the state currently is projecting the possibility of a deficit, right? We know because of HR1, and we know about the possible impact of the upcoming revenue forecast. So, what I shared with our board and shared across, across the board is LFO Legislative Fiscal Office basically asked all departments through the state of Oregon to do a five percent reduction, and it's a little more nuanced than that. Just for the summary, they kind of did reductions, they did it by a certain percentage. They went through that process, the Department of Education's one of those departments, and on Monday, they released what those reductions would look like, the impacts to school districts. And there's a lot. There's a lot of impacts, and it would hit us, you know, especially if we got into the state school fund, which it could. They, they've done their communication piece, and I want to make sure the board knows that we're monitoring that. Right now, it's very clear, they're trying to be very clear, it is an exercise right now. There is no determined cuts, there's no determined reductions. It really, my understanding, limited understanding, is it's the November nineteenth revenue forecast is gonna be the indicator of where that goes. What happens to that? If that revenue comes in above and wow, great news, then that was an exercise, that's all it was. If it comes in where I will say the hints I'm getting is they're very worried about where that comes in, then that, some of those reductions, if not all, could be realized. And then we'll, we'll start unpacking that more as a district. Yes, Jose?
Have you heard anything, especially given that new report about tapping into the Educational Stability Fund?
So, yes, thank you. That was gonna be my last statement around this, because you're gonna hear me, board, as, as a, as a David Douglas superintendent, and I talked to our administrators about this this morning, I am gonna be advocating for that very strongly. And I, I, I'm gonna request that you do when the time's right, and as a board, we'll be talking about that. I want to be clear with that, that I, you know, so far, we've gotten a little bit, I would say, possible pushback, and the pushback is, yes, but we don't want to spend it all. You know, we want to be careful, we want to make sure we understand. I get that, understand that, but the reality is that fund has 1.2 billion dollars in it, and if this is not a crisis, what is? So, I'm not advocating that we spend it all and done, but the reality, my understanding of the gap that we could be talking about in the possible mid-biennium if it came, you know, the real, what's the number, 337 million I talked about, they could do that, cover it, and it's, basically, it has a revenue stream, right? It, the education, it has a fund that replenishes it during the process. So, again, personally and professionally, I think that's something to look at. The voters put that in place for a reason. I know we have to be fiscally prudent. I understand our legislatures have that, but when, if this is not a crisis, if it comes in with a revenue forecast when all those cuts are, I don't know what it, what is. And the reality, I would argue that, and this is the hard part, we know there will, if that happens, if nineteenth's bad, there'll be cuts across the state, cut services across the state. I get that, understand that. There's another avenue for that, if the governor, governor wants to choose to go that direction. But for the schools specifically, there is a safety valve. And why wouldn't we access that safety valve, especially if our families and communities are getting less services from the state because of reductions? Who are they gonna look to for services? I believe us, and we want to be leaning into that and doing the best we can with that. And if we're facing significant reductions related to that, rather than accessing that fund. So, this is my knowledge today. This is where I'm at today. We aren't in a position to advocate, because right now, all it is is an exercise. The community, the communications we're getting, quote-unquote, is don't panic, wait, let the legislature do their work, let the revenue forecasts come, and then we kind of engage once we need to engage, if that makes sense. So, yes, I hope that answered your question. We don't know if they're gonna activate it or not, but I'm very confident that this superintendent will be advocating for it. I believe that OSBA would be advocating for it. You could speak more than that than I could, but I believe that. I believe that COSA will be advocating for it. And all of those pieces, kind of, this is our, our request. Yes.
So, to be clear, the legislature is the target, and the session is February, short session. That's when they're going to be making the decisions. I would also say, yes, there's the ta, there's the cut side. There's also a revenue side, which the legislature has an opportunity to detach the federal tax code from the state tax code and make changes to the, to state tax code that would offset some of those HR1 impacts. So, as we're thinking of our advocacy strategy, I hope we'll think about the revenue side as well as not just the state school fund, because, you know, that's less pressure on the rest of the state, because every agency is going through that budget reduction exercise.
Yeah. Yeah, and the, and the legislature's done that before. They've, they've taken that action, so it's something that, that has been done. Same with the, the state, the, the educational fund has been accessed before, so these aren't impossible tasks. Anyway, that, that one, I'll wait and comment on. I'm hearing some things. I'm sure you're hearing a lot more than I am, Stephanie, but I am hearing some things about, about resistance there as well, specifically now. I think next biennium, there's more interest, more traction. But these are just little comments, nothing official.
Since you mentioned OSBA, at the recent Legislative Policy Committee meeting, some of us were very surprised that a number of rural school districts were very hesitant to touch the Educational Stability Fund, and they very, made it very clear that that was their feeling on it. I think even OSBA was surprised, so they did mention, please let us know how you feel about this. So, if we could just send the OSBA a letter, letting them know that we very much support touching that fund. I don't want them to get a flood from rural districts and then decide to back off that one. Yeah, that's not what they should do.
Sorry, thank you. I didn't have my mic on. The bottom line for us is right now is November nineteenth, and we'll be communicating formally. At our Monday, we will talk about this, this, at the workshop, we'll talk about some of this as well, based on what we're knowing. But we'll, we'll focus more on current kind of landscape of our budget, knowing rolling up today our budget, knowing our costs right now, kind of some projections of where we're at. That's the intention. It's a model of, we did it last year, right? The idea is not, not to cause fear, it's just to be transparent with everyone, so there's not surprises. We want to make sure we all understand where we're at and what that landscape is. Pat, anything you want to add as a start to the, okay? And the last thing, again, I apologize, those are heavy, it's real. And I'm, I'm proud to be part of this team to navigate it. You know, we do have to navigate it. We've committed to do the best we can for our community and kids, so we're gonna do that every single day. But I told you, I wanted to end on a fun note, and there's so many fun things. We had, this is aside, I wasn't gonna say, but OPB came out with their final kind of one-hour video around 2025, if you haven't seen it yet. Anyway, there's just a lot of good things, but reminder, Legally Blonde. Yeah, if you haven't got your ticket, I'm there Friday night, so. Yeah, well, I'll see you there, because I'm going Friday and tomorrow too. So, next couple of weekends, just fun, fun activity, obviously not an activity, fun performance, amazing, talented. I was gonna say kids, I should say young adults, but the reality is, is thespians, yes, absolutely thespians. So, I'm looking, I am so looking forward to that.
My sixth graders' hot review on Legally Blonde, because they got to see it today with the middle school music programs, is she wants to go see it again.
Hey, alright. Doesn't get much better revered than that. You've reviewed that.
Thank you, Ken. Pat, we are on to you with the financial investment report.
I will try to keep it brief. We already talked about statewide issues. Something that I wanted to bring to your attention on audit is, as we know, the federal shutdown kind of dragged on a little more than we anticipated. One of the issues is that the federal government never did finish the compliance supplement. And so, there was a draft issued in, I think, August, which is a few months late. And then, everything happened. And so, that means auditors around the nation can't finish their single audit on federal funds. So, we did get information today from the Secretary of State's audits through our auditors that they are not considering that to be a reason for you not to turn your audit in on time. So, they will require you to do two. Basically, your financial audit and then a supplement on your single audit. So, we're confirming with our auditors that that timeline will be met. But again, you know, things change quickly, so, I don't know. General fund, we're still right around fourteen-two, fourteen-three for ending fund balance. You'll notice in those purchasing approvals, there were quite a list of outside placements. We are seeing a bit of an uptick this year on that. We're pulling in savings to cover that, cover those costs. Nutrition services, we'll be doing several different equipment replacements, primarily walk-ins. Believe it or not, some of our walk-in coolers still have wood interiors. And so, we're slowly phasing those out and replacing them. You'll also notice a project later down in another fund where we're doing a little investigation on the main freezer for the district. It's down at our South Powellhurst complex. But we have some heaving and cracking in the floor, and so, we're checking into that. We'll see if it's a minor fix or something a little more drastic. We'll let you know and keep you informed. Grants fund, you'll see that that projected ending fund balance has remained about the same. But you'll see that the revenues and expenditures both have increased. We did get a bump up in our early childhood grant. We did also, and you saw that in your approvals, and then also for preschool for all. Let's go down a little bit more. Construction excise tax, we mentioned that. We may supplement some HVAC projects with our construction excise tax also. And investment report, really probably the main thing there is watching the interest rate slowly tick down. So, you'll notice it was over five percent. I think it was 5.3 September ago. And this past September, we were down to 4.6 percent. So, we're starting to see those interest rates go down, and that just means that the interest income is less. Any questions?
Just, this answer is probably no, because you would tell us, but have you encountered, given that our ending fund balance keeps going down, or is it just keep going down? And we have used that before for cash flow issues, like a grant not coming in on time, and there was this federal shutdown. Has any of that impacted, have there been any sort of cash flow issues or, or anything around, like, late payments?
We have not yet seen impacts of that. I think the biggest concern is when this started, ODE did meet with all business managers and talked about this is how much in reserve we have. So, again, it was like from four weeks to six weeks on some things, to about three months. And so, we were starting to get a little bit nervous on a few things at the end of the month, but it seems like things have, have resolved. And, yeah, as cash flow, or as our balance goes down, yeah, our cash flow becomes a little more critical in managing. We do have our bonds, and so, we are actually, you know, having to manage those funds too. So, for example, you know, when we set up and we sell the bonds, we get the cash in, we set a cash flow schedule based on where we think those payments are gonna happen. We're six months behind on CTE centers, so we've had to adjust. We've gotten some of those investments back, had to reinvest, and then reinvest again, depending on, you know, where the interest rate was, where we thought payments were gonna be scheduled, so.
Alright, thank you, Pat. Okay, now we have OSBA election, that's just an action item, and we have two sets of Okay, uh, now we have uh, OSBA election, that's just an action item, and we have two sets of um. Of um, positions to. To vote on. So the first one that we'll, uh, we need an action item for is on the director position eighteen. Is there a motion?
I move that the David Douglas School Board nominate Brenda Rivas for the OSBA Board of Director position number eighteen.
Second.
Okay, so we moved to second, is there any discussion?
Uh, both of them would be great. Chris Howard has been on the OSBA board for like the last very, very long time. And Brenda's someone who's new from Park Rose. Who would do such a great job in this role as well. So um, that's why I lean towards um, Brenda Rivas uh, taking the seat.
If there's no other, we can vote. Director Ender?
Ender, I.
Stevenson, I.
Epstein, I.
Governor, I.
Jordan, I.
Stevens, I.
Franklin, I. Okay, so that's for position eighteen, and then um, the next is for the Legislative Policy Committee. Um, and. Is there a motion for the Legislative Policy Committee positions?
I move the David Douglas School Board nominate the following OSBA Legislative Policy Committee positions. Heather Coleman for position seventeen. Althea Ender for position eighteen, and Christie Split for position nineteen.
A second. Wonderful, any discussion? Alright, um, Director Ender?
Ender, I.
Stevenson, I.
Epstein, I.
Governor, I.
Jordan, I.
Stevens, I.
Franklin, I.
Get it, Ender.
Alright, um, we are now on to board policy discussion. This is our first reads. Yeah, so um. I was gonna uh, just skip, so with district curriculum, I'm not exactly sure what we wanted to discuss around that. But I will, I'm just giving you a heads up for the next one. Um, for the policy BHD regarding board member stipends and reimbursement. We just wanted to bring this as a discussion. Um, so is this, is this a formal first read or is this just a? Yeah, this is just a policy discussion, great. Okay, just wanna make sure. Um, so this is, uh, this is something that you guys might have been aware of, you know, that boards can take action to um. To essentially provide stipends for sitting board members. I'm, I'm in favor of that. I think it's a hard thing. I think people are all over the board with that. But I think it's important for uh, essentially. Seeing a board that reflects the community. I think it lowers barriers to people considering board service and then choosing board service. So I think there's a lot of positives. So it's, I don't think there's ever a great time to do it. So I do see it as something that you, we pay forward to the next round of board members. Um, but there's things to think about. So we wanted to bring this as kind of a preliminary discussion before we had any, you know, hard ask or policy to vote on.
And I will say just as a. Context. There are many ways to do this. It doesn't have to be. Like Portland Public, for instance, is, I think, the first school district that passed it, and they passed it at the full level, which is five hundred dollars a month. For every single person. That's the most you can give, but it can look differently. It could be. Ten dollars, yeah, I'm not, but it can be whatever we want it to be, or we don't have to look at this at all. It's not one or the other. There's all the levels in between as well.
I'm wondering if there is a provision for um, a board member to say no. Okay, because I work for ODHS and sometimes people are so close to that benefit cliff. That like five hundred dollars a month means they'll lose their SNAP or they'll lose their, you know, other payments. That, that they're counting on for support. So. If we're talking about trying to get people who are, who have struggles, who have poverty, you know, just something to consider.
Is there a timeline that we need to, or that OSBA is asking? Boards to decide on this policy?
No, this one didn't come from OSBA. Um, we haven't heard about it. I think probably because it's, you know, folks are all over the map in terms of uh, what they wanna do and how they see this.
Well, last year they put out, suggested, and then they pulled it back because of ethics stuff, so it had, last year was making its way through.
At this point, has.
OSBA definitely has um, recommendations about how to do this properly. And probably the most proper way to do this is during the budget process and voting it in while, when we're doing the budget. They don't have any recommendations about you should do this or you shouldn't do this. They're very much like. Your district can decide whatever's best for you, but if you decide after your discussion that you wanna implement it. We have best practices for how to implement that. Because there is weirdness about voting to give yourself money, so they have ways. To do that process where you can recuse yourself and other people vote, like there's, they have a process. But I think right now we're just discussing if we, if we even wanna go there.
I guess my question is, does it have to follow the board position itself? Because like I could imagine us as a board putting, you know, however many thousand dollars or something into a pool, the way that. You know, people are trying to get medical help are put into a pool where if somebody on the board needs childcare, right? We can approve that on a case by case basis to like lessen the barriers without like. I don't know, making it a pay, pay to be on the board thing. Um, but I don't know if that just adds complication or. The problem we're trying to solve. Is, isn't, this isn't an income problem, right? People aren't gonna suddenly go five hundred bucks a month, let me join the board and do all this work. It's to overcome barriers. So what are the barriers we're trying to overcome? And then how do we pay for that? Does this policy fit that? Or do we need something else?
I'm raising you. Um, I, I think that we need something else. I like the idea of it being built in, so not, um, you know, if folks are facing barriers and. Not one more barrier, they have to go through the process to get that barrier addressed. Um, and yeah, I guess that's where I'd stop.
Um, yeah, because what you're talking about is more of a reimbursement, which is also treated differently than, than a stipend in your taxes. I, for instance, don't wanna weigh in on pro or con against this because I can't take this. I am on disability. If I take income, I lose disability. What would be the point of shifting? Disability, which is not a lot, to taking money from the district, which wouldn't be a lot. So I couldn't take, participate in this at all. But I do know a lot about it because I've sat through three trainings on it now. Um, so, um, and I still forget because it's very convoluted. Even the ethical way to do this process is very convoluted. And, but we, we can also look at just a healthier reimbursement model, cuz right now we. Our policy actually says we do reimburse people for things like that. But we don't really ever take advantage of it, because like Althea said, asking for that is its own barrier. So that, that's a different conversation. Stipends, cuz we do have reimbursement in our policy, I believe, already.
I, I thought there was, uh, hey, I thought this came up before in years prior, that you, we cannot reimburse for childcare. Was, am I misremembering this? I thought that childcare during board meetings was, was an issue.
Uh, I don't, I, you're, I, I don't remember. I remember it's the conversation, I don't remember it being an issue. I think the question is, is when did it, when does it become a taxable? Or I think that's the thing we need to navigate, right? Is it a taxable benefit? And how does that play out? Because we've had, we've had, we actually had childcare at. We kinda partnered back years ago, partnered with our childcare program, had high school students here, had. So we, we went through that and did that. Um, I don't remember it that we couldn't do it, but I'd have to do some research on it. I really don't remember.
But if like somebody pays a babysitter fifty bucks, you know, a month or something, that's way less than five hundred bucks. Like it's.
Right.
Their kids can stay at home. I, I don't know, as a mom, like bringing your kids, I did it, believe me, since first grade, they used to come, but.
Yeah, yeah. And that's where I think your question, I think it is separate. I think the board could do that. Talk about, you know, how do we develop some sort of funding structure to help make or eliminate their barriers? But I think this specific policy is around stipends. That's, yeah, so we'd have to look at reimbursement and how we broaden that or. Get some um, clarification from OSBA.
I would be open, I'm absolutely open to the discussion, but I do feel. Like as a member of the community coming into the schools, I appreciate the fact that this is not. A role that comes with a stipend. And I think it would feel potentially. I'm not sure, I'm not sure how I would feel about it, having a stipend, and I know that comes uh, from a place where. Potentially I don't need support in overcoming childcare barriers. But I, I like the fact that there's no difference between me and other community members as far as. Like a, there's no power dynamic when it comes to money. I don't know how to describe it.
Okay, that is all very helpful. Um, this is a good time for, you know, folks to, to weigh in, but we'll just. Think about bringing this at a, at a later time. We just wanted to kinda test the waters and make sure it was on people's radar.
I do have a question. Is that, is looking into a healthier reimbursement for things to remove barriers? Whether or not people take advantage of that, is that something we do wanna look into?
Yes, because we have lost many board members around that since I've been on the board. At least three that I know of who directly said, I can't because of childcare. Absolutely.
And I, I think that that's, the stipend, I think, is a little easier to navigate if people, cuz you can opt out. Uh, my understanding is, is that some of the PPS board members have already said, like, I'm not taking it, but they, you know, approved it. And then, so a person could choose just not to, you know, or, or a person could, but that would a little be, you know, wouldn't be as visible clearly. Cuz it would just be voted that, you know, it'd be just between, it'd just be a decision that each board member would make if it passed, which would allow for spending it on.
I'm pretty sure it would still be very visible because it would have to be on, uh, part of the budget consideration. So it'd still be visible whether or not you took the stipend.
Well, we would approve the budget line item, but we wouldn't be like, and, you know, we could approve it and then not spend it all.
Well, according to OSBA.
I haven't sat through those meetings.
The way we vote is that you can't vote when that budget line item affects you, so then you vote. You have to vote on every single person individually, and so that person can opt out.
And you have to do it every year or just the first time it gets set up?
Every time it's on the budget. According to OSBA, that's how the, that's how they, they're getting around the ethics implications of it. Cuz that's why they pulled it that first time, because you can't vote on, according to the state who made that law. The state then went and said, oh no, but you can't actually vote on your own stipend, ever. So the way they get around it is that we have to vote on each person individually, so that person can opt out.
But my understanding from PPS is that they would, they would still be voted in because say I resign tomorrow, then whoever's taking the seat. You wouldn't want the person to be tied to the stipend, you'd want the seat to be tied to the stipend. So you approve it, or you don't approve it, and then the choice would be between you and the business office, whether you're taking it or not. But the position would be voted on as a, as like, do you have a stipend for position one, do you have a stipend for position two? It wouldn't be tied to the person, is what I men, what I understand from, then the opt out is, it's still budgeted in line item. But like, for example, we have a line item for travel that's sometimes probably not even closely hit, and then just rolls over right into some other fund. Or into itself. Yeah, into the general. But it would be similar, right? The, like, that's the way I see it, is that it would be. A line item, and it would either be used or it wouldn't be used, depending on whether people took it or not, the same way you go to conferences or you don't.
Well, the board already has a line item for its own discretion, and we could just get more specific about that line item. But I don't know, uh, there's a lot to discuss.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's one vote once forever for the position, and then you can opt out behind scenes, that would make it easier for people as well. That is not what I got from the trainings I took, but if that's a thing that they can do now, that would make it, yeah. We'll find out if they did it right.
There are legitimate barriers to serving.
I, I just wanna say, uh, I served on a union board. And it was uncompensated. And then uh. We started to compensate ourselves for the same, or have the option to be compensated for the same reason. Like you're doing, you're doing work. So you should be compensated for doing that work. And I think we should give people the option to be compensated for doing work that is meaningful, uh, but also. Deny it, or not deny it, but refuse it. Just because, I don't know, I'd rather five hundred bucks a month go towards helping kids with trauma. If, for me, but that's cuz I'm hashtag blessed, don't have a barrier to be here that's financial.
Okay, good. Um, I guess, thanks for bringing this.
Yeah, there's another board policy discussion. Was there anything you wanted to say about that?
On curriculum, is there anyone who wanted to talk about curriculum? I did hope it get on the agenda, but I didn't really wanna talk about it, so. We might just skip that if no one's prepared to pick, to talk about it. Well, then let's move along. The next one is uh, more board policy, second read action item.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move all the board policies that are listed on the agenda tonight um, for approval. A second.
Great, um, policy review group, Ken?
Second read, nothing's changed. We've talked about it.
Alright, then if we're prepared to vote, we can start with Director Ender?
Ender, I.
Stevenson, I.
Epstein, I.
Governor, I.
Jordan, I.
Stevens, I.
Franklin, I. Okay, lovely. Um, we are now to reflections on public comment. And we had quite a bit tonight.
I will say I was surprised that there weren't Native American courses. Um, so I'm glad that was brought to at least my attention. Um, so I appreciated that.
I fully support that as well. I, and. From my own, my own personal journey, twelfth grade was the. My high school did a um. Latin American uh, English class, where it was texts from. Latin America, Central America, South America, and it was awesome. And at some point it got dicey cuz the state decided. Uh, they weren't gonna count it as credit for graduation unless they changed the name of it. And just weird stuff happened, and so I, I want to see. More effort made to. Learn more about more cultures, cuz it's not just Europeans dominating the world. It's, there's a lot of cool stuff that's happened.
Yeah, and if, if I can add to that, while we don't have a course, there is a state curriculum under Senate Bill thirteen, Tribal History, Shared History. That has required lessons that have been written by tribes, different tribes, and so it is required. Um, and we've done some of that work and um, amplified it in certain grade levels. So again, another, if you're interested, our social science specialist could definitely share the work happening. Uh, but it's not a separate course, but there are state lessons, and I believe Oregon's the only state that has required lessons. So it's a start.
It would be really great though to expand out. I mean, you know, I know my high schoolers loved both Latinx studies and Black studies at the, you know, at the. Um, English four level, like those are really great courses, so. Wonderful to have Indigenous studies.
At the NSBA conference, a bunch of years ago, two years ago, um, there was a session on. The native tribes in Alaska, taking just like the science book and switching it. So it's relevant to their culture, and I know that's not the level we wanna go. But there's so many places that we could partner with the students and the families to see where we could just like sprinkle in. Um, and I know with budget and the stretch thin, and I know you're stretched thin, but this is. This might be something that the families would help with a lot. Um, cuz it, it would be nice. This might be something that the families would help with a lot, um um cause it it would be nice, I think it'd be very meaningful. For peop- especially for kids who aren't native to hear about um that history.
Something really um struck me in what Travis said about the first lesson he remembers really getting about. His people was a trauma lesson. And I think that anyone in any ethnic studies class would tell you that's not the place to start. And so I think it would be interesting to sort of take a look at those lessons and ensure that, you know, we work with the families and the tri- you know, just. I'm not sure how to do it, but that that is poignant for a kid to say, ah is this really the way you see me? And I will say like a lot of lessons are about genocide and that's an important part of our history, but like. Where's the pride, right? Where's the history of the the culture itself and I just, yeah, that was that was hard to hear.
It would surprise me if that's part of one of those state lessons, not not making excuses, but it wouldn't surprise me at all, but that's something.
They're important to learn.
Agree, it just to just to add in here, just because they happen to be in the audience, um every month I asked for updates from our buildings and they. Share information, kinda activities, wins, concerns. And this month Menlo Sarah communicated that they went through a process of asking all their students and families about the flags in their cafeteria. If you've ever been in their cafeteria, it's beautiful, all the flags of all the different cultures that are represented. And up there, she she Nick went through a process of trying to get, okay, what's not represented? Anyway, I think you shared, I don't know the exact number, but was it two new tribe flag, tribal flags as well that were brought to your attention? And now we have two new tribal flags hanging up in Menlo's cafeteria, along with many other flags that were identified, so. Anyway, just just a little nugget because we're talking about it and they're sitting out there, I thought I'd share, so.
It would be interesting to like involve, like maybe one of those multicultural nights, the families to say, you know, what do you know about your country's flag? And tell us a little bit about it, cause I guarantee you. A lot of the folks that come from those countries could tell you the history of why the colors are that way and what the star represents and. Um might be an interesting way of getting families involved and kind of a lesson around those flags.
So and I did say, just just uh shared with Travis, but I I was serious, I'll be bringing that concept idea um around. And it didn't just studies type class um to our high school administrations to start the conversation and navigate. I can't guarantee anything right now, but we definitely will start rolling with that conversation, so.
There's a very strong um Native American health. I'm not sure if it's a master's program like. Within the public health school at Portland State, um native studies and native health studies. Has a very strong curriculum in multiple graduate level classes and undergraduate level classes, it might be a nice partnership. And I'm sure they would love to um partner with us.
I just get it, if if we're, if this doesn't move us too far from that, the the public comment. Uh in regards to October fifteenth and a failure of leadership, I. I don't know if I understood the comment correctly, or or who, did did we? You I know it was the protest, but what was the? Failure of lead- who what was the leadership reference? Was that to David Douglas leadership or fed- federal leadership? Okay, David and then.
I think she wanted the district to be more involved.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Why, it was a specific decision not to be as involved.
Well, I don't think that's fair to say that. This is too dicey to talk about.
Oh, I don't I don't think it is, I just don't know, I don't know, I my plan is to call Ms. Sherman and ask her, because that was. Test, I don't know exactly what she was referencing, I was there at that protest the whole time, I was there with staff. Um so I know exactly what happened and why, so what what she was, I don't know what she was is unhappy with. So I I do plan to follow up with her to call and ask to get more details, um because I think she she kind of went back to positives. Which I'd like to hear, but I definitely wanna hear where we let her down and kind of learn more about that.
The way that I understood that incident was that this was something that was put in social media, right? For people that were not members of our district who came here to protest on behalf of one of our students. Um not necessarily at the request of that student, but um these were not folks from our district that that came in protest. And I think the ask was that we would mobilize counter protest and um I know I was asked and. And a lot of us got emails about it and I didn't think that was an appropriate role for the board, especially as there was an active. Um request for that student and the club, and there was a process for that and we were following a process, so I think there was. Um some frustration that we were enabling this to happen, um and. Yeah, it's different, different roles, I mean, when I was a community member, I might have done something different, but I'm on the board and. Yeah, that's me.
That's what I meant by less involved, that's what I was referencing that I did.
Like we should have been counter protesting these folks who are coming into our district. And I I sort of felt like that would give it energy and um. Yeah, so that's where I was.
I don't disagree, no, thank you, I was just. Surprised me and I feel bad when I hear someone say they they love something and then they they get let down, so.
I think, I I think too, there's part to it that there was threat, there was social media conversation around them coming into the building, not just protesting. Right, that 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 folks were saying they were gonna come into the auditorium or that was, there was rumors being spread about that. Being a potential and that there wasn't like a more um. Calculated response to like that as a threat, like I think that's what the how the ICE um.
I felt like the district did a good job of putting folks out there, some of which were not noticeable. There were a lot of adults out there that were that were checking it out and the students had an opportunity to interact and I think did a fabulous job. I mean, it could have gone in a different way for sure, like you never know, you get folks coming and you don't know what their perspectives are. And they've heard things on social media that aren't true. Um and there's just so much polarization right now, right? So that was a is a tough conversation, um but I think with protecting our kids and their rights. And you know, we have a law, sanctuary law, I mean, that's very clear to me and these aren't the same thing.
And I I will add, um again, I'm not saying that we can't get better and and lessons learned. But the high school team specifically had a a very significant plan that they spent about what if, what if, what if? So the safety of the school, what if, right, kind of, and I mean, they they spent hours kind of planning and preparing. It didn't occur, there was no one trying to get in the building, but that was a question, okay, what if this happens, what are we gonna do? How are we monitoring, where are we, yeah, so all those pieces, so that was not something I can testify to that that was ignored, there was a plan for that. And they were on top of it, that was not something that was public communicated, to be quite honest with you, because if someone. Was gonna try to get into our buildings, you don't necessarily tell them what our plan is, honestly, that was a conversation we had. So um but there was a plan.
And people have First Amendment rights.
Yeah, I I I I think it's in, to me, I think it's important to. Watch this stuff, to give that students see this kind of stuff happen and it was just like, this is, this is the thing that. This country lets us do is protest and not necessarily get put in jail for it, as long as you do it. Following appropriate rules and so. I I think it's it's a frustrating. It it it's a frustrating circumstance to have that, have the that be what's protested. Um but I think it's important to see that protest is an option. If that, if I said that coherently enough. Uh and and then get exposure to that in kind of a safe way, which I think is what David Douglas provided, the high school provided, was a safe. A safe way for the students to. Let whatever this weird protest madness was happen, but know, like you said, with the plan of. We're gonna make sure the students are safe throughout, and I think that's that's awesome.
Uh the other part of Kate's testimony was about how good the response has been around ICE in the last couple of days. So thank you, um and thank you to all the staff that's worked, I wanna call out Andrei Novayosko. At District Office who's been doing so much work around this as well, um. I know we heard more testimony right that, and I wanna appreciate the staff and the constant learning and updating. Um I have some connections I'll get with you with for whistles if you need them, cause I know some parents sometimes feel like they wanna do something. The one thing I would say um is that I got all the Menlo emails because I'm on the parent square. But some of that misinformation are just from parents not at Menlo, so when something like this happens. I wonder if there could be one email that kind of breaks it down, that goes out to everyone, just to kill. That misinformation right when it happens, um. I think all the emails from Menlo were super appropriate and perfect, but we could have put them all on one at a certain point and sent them up to everyone. To keep it, we don't wanna scare people, but at the same time, we're seeing, and it's not just here, it's everywhere that. Misinformation fires off faster than real information, so the more we can do to stay on top of that, even if it's a. Lightly, that would be great.
There's also like, it's hard to verify, because you're talking about sometimes unmarked vehicles, you're talking about people who don't identify themselves or wear masks. And you know, it's it's really hard to get accurate information, and so it's that balance right between scaring people and telling them what's going on. So um we're gonna be in this for a while and. Bless y'all, because I know you have the kids and the families um at the center of everything.
Okay, good, and we had lots of testimony about the soccer, um street soccer, which was really great to hear, so many community members, I I was really excited to hear, like. From our own students and um it's just, it's really, it's a super exciting and I also just really like when. Folks come out and advocate for stuff, so that was good, good too.
Yeah, my comments were not against like, and my comments were not like. So cool, like everything that we talk about all the time, like those are folks who live in the district, they know our kids, they know our communities, they're like. Fighting for space on the field and they're providing mentorship and and after school support and all kinds of stuff, I'm just like, yes, please, like that's. This is what we we hope will happen, so that was really cool.
And we'll plan to bring it back in exact session to talk about it, cause it is negotiations, it is a contract to kind of go through and go deeper with the team. Our intention here was to follow up with the request we believe we heard from the board, is we want more information, so we'll do that and then after that. You know, determination, do we bring it before the board for your consideration, right? So we'll we'll kind of keep this moving forward, I know Prosper will keep it moving forward, they're very interested. I guarantee we'll have emails tomorrow morning, Pat and I about it, so we'll we'll can, I mean, it doesn't happen overnight, right? But we will plan to, as the board meetings go, for us to continue until we get to that final point where you guys can consider it.
I'd I'd love to. Know if there's other opportunities that we could grow, if not specifically street soccer into. Other district properties, but uh stuff like this where we have, we have this cool partnership. Um which I think, I think we do uh have some, but one, I'd love to learn more and two, if specifically. Street soccer, if we told them, hey, here's another field that. Uh the back of the back of Menlo or there there's a big, or any elementary school has a field that. Is not used a lot of the time, um and so be be cool to. Find ways to improve those that aren't necessarily coming directly from the money that we have. I I'm I'm doing my, I'm doing my, I'm doing my best and I look.
I like that idea, it's up to the board, we'll do as directed, I would recommend we focus on this.
For sure.
See kind of how it goes, get it done right, and then obviously the board says, hey, we'd like to talk about more, what do you think? But I I'd 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 say focus on this.
It's a little tan- uh tangent, but when I lived in Newark, New Jersey, like the putting in the urban gardens was like a really big. And in and like having educational spaces where the kids were taught and brought in was just, it it just turned so much of these dead lots into. Vibrant spaces and they are easy to turn over, like you know, you can turn a garden into back into a building pretty quick, so. Anyway, that was pretty, I I would keep thinking about Newark's gardens. Um okay, uh last, we are on to board, sorry, did you wanna?
Just really quickly, have we had any other organizations come and proposition other options? Besides the soccer groups?
Cause that that all went through Prosper, kind of Prosper, uh no, we have had organizations come before and have conversations and. But not not anything specifically.
Had that building on there that had asbestos and it was horrible and then burned to the ground and then we had to deal with that. There's been a lot with that property, yeah.
Alright, um last, we have board liaison and committee reports, does anyone have um either or both to report?
Uh I had a I don't, have we met since Try It Tuesday? I can't remember, I don't think we. Yeah, I think last meeting I said I was excited about Try It Tuesday and now this meeting I have tried it Tuesday. And it was a wonderful experience and Director Ender was there and Director Epstein was there, Ken was there. Oh yeah, I was sorry, Director Gamar George was there, uh and we tried some kimchi and. Uh taro root stir fry, which was was delightful, that was delightful. So yeah, that was a good time at at Cherry Park and then um. I also visited Ventura Park since last meeting, uh and had a wonderful time learning more about what they do there. And all the cool stuff they do, they're working hard, it's great, I love seeing it.
I don't know if this fits here, but this last weekend is OSBA annual convention and a couple of us went, learned some great things. One thing I heard that I wanna say before I forget about it, I found out from the some ODE person that was there. That the seed survey is starting to develop graphics that look just like the youth truth survey. I'm just letting you all know, since we might not have.
We have our own, right? I thought that, yeah.
So yeah, just so you know.
I have stuff. I have stuff, uh DDOA with Shawna, um their enrollment has ticked up quicker than prior years. And you can take a guess why, and she said, yes, some of their students are due to ICE. Um and we, I was a person that attended the OSBA convention, so we uplifted. Um DDOA at our Multnomah County Roundtable, well, um it was lovely. They had their Dia de los Muertos celebration that I couldn't attend, but she sent me pictures, I wanna show you, but I can't. Um Christie with Child Development Center, they're moving from North Powellhurst to the high school, I believe. They're moving to the high school, so families are a bit nervous, um but then the, she is waiting on preschool expansion information. Cause that was a request too, and then West Powellhurst, um they uh this Friday, they're hosting their native language reader. Read aloud and this week it's in Spanish, and so the students hear from their families reading in their languages. I wanna go, I'm gonna try to go, I think it's nine thirty to ten that morning, um and for when I can tell, the native language changes. Each time, I believe, um. And I had a long conversation with Susan around disruptive behavior and I have. Questions to ask someone who I don't know who to ask about policy versus law around what happens when. Disruptive behavior is happening and how we help support the students and families in that. Um cause it seems like a very long process, um. Um I attended, shout out to Pat, because I at the convention, I learned a lot. And I went to the fiscal wake up call with the Ashland School District, if you know the history, I did not. But um and I went to State School Fund Basics. But um and I went to State School Fund Basics and you were amazing, Pat. Thank you so much for everything you do and everything you present to us, it's lovely. I felt so secure sitting in these sessions, knowing Pat's Pat's got us, you know, it's so great. And then I went to Accountability Implementation Updates and Feedback for ODE, very heated discussion. Um so thank you so much, also the presentation, amazing, I was so secure. I was like, David Douglas is amazing, um those are all my updates.
Uh next Friday, uh at Menlo, I'll be going to the um. Familia Suite in Dallas, it's like a uh Latin Latin families getting together to do joyful things. So if anyone wants to come with me, you should come to Menlo next Friday at five forty-five.
Uh I wanted to add that as part of my liaison role for the district office, I got to meet with Student Services and it was very much like. Basic learning for me about these different departments, uh so the next one will probably be transportation. So if anyone wants to hear where I'm going next or what I'm doing, okay, sounds good. Because again, district office is a little bit different than um the a brick and mortar liaison role. And so I'm still figuring out what they could use for me and how I can learn about them. At OSBA, um two things I wanted to highlight, one, there was a uh presentation on our shared history, tribal history. And how to incorporate it into a curriculum, so that was relevant for tonight. Um but the there were concrete examples of how, again, you could take um historic pers- perspectives of Native Americans. And fold them into different curriculum places um throughout, so that's the sprinkling, I think that was mentioned, um very, very neat. And then a- another thing that happened at OSBA is we had some movement on the advisory committee. Um that was formally kinda moving towards what's called a a caucus in the OSBA. And it was gonna be like the Pride Caucus, you may have remembered it from last year if you were here. Um did not become a caucus, but it is now memorialized as an advisory committee, so it's LGBTQ, um IA two S plus. Advisory Committee, and so we're moving forward with that model. What that means for you is that um you can be a member of that, at being a sitting school board member, uh you can consider yourself a member, you can get. Updates, you can um engage in that if you feel like there's issues we need to learn more about or advise OSBA on. Um or you know, things that resources our district could use around um issues that affect students and educators in that area. So it's a big win, long time coming, um and I'm gonna be your vice chair for that group, so uh we have kind of direct access, so more to come.
Send me info, um I want to say this is not about liaisons. I just wanna say a big shout out and a thank you, because our very own Jose. Um who is our vice chair of our board, did something really difficult. Our dear friend Hua, who we love, um who was our rep for District Forty-seven in the past, left a a spot open. And the legislature and Jose threw his hat in the ring. Um as someone who I think we know works hard, like Hua worked hard, so does Jose. They they're both very similar in that way and it's not easy to do, right, to put yourself out like that. And I just, I'm very proud that like when the vote of the people came in, the precincts, he won by a long shot. Like it was like fifty-eight percent, fifty-six, it was it was by in three, a three-way race. But unfortunately, the decision is not up to the people in this case, it's up to the county commissioners. And they chose the third place candidate um for that role, who is awesome, not gonna say is not a bad guy. Um it's gonna be a great legislator, but not my choice. And I just wanna say thank you, Jose, for putting yourself out there, for the kids in this district, for as an education advocate. And and just as who you are, it's not easy to do and um I just appreciate you.
Alright, well then we are adjourned and we'll see everybody Monday.